Good evening. Calling me, oh, I don't have my paper up here. April 16th. The April 16th Town Council committed the whole special meeting agenda to order. We are all present except for Councilor Merritt and Councilor Bordalain. Onto new business. Two zero two four dash two four seven dash one FYE 2025 proposed budget. First item on our agenda is Human Resources. That's account number one zero one two on page seventy-eight. Councilor Parker, would you like to put a number on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion for $494,788 for account number one zero one two. I so moved.
Second, Guyaski.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Guyaski. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us the synopsis of your budget, please?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Arneisha Green, Director of HR Risk Management. So for ten twelve, there's really not much change here. It's a three and a half percent increase, as you can see. A little bit, a little more than half, I would say, is due to salary. And the rest are just a couple of training items, a little bit of equipment, a little bit in there for arbitration should we need it, or the other seven thousand increase.
Do we have any questions or comments? Councilor Guyaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is for the estimate for FYE 2024. You're coming in under budget at $31,000. Is that because of a vacant position?
Part show throughout the year, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands. We will take a vote on this. Councilor Pacino?
Aye.
Councilor Rusk?
Aye.
Councilor Jones?
Aye.
Councilor McBride?
Yep, aye.
Councilor Guyaski?
Aye.
And Councilor Parker?
Aye.
All right. That is seven. Human Resources. Council Bordalain just arrived at six oh four PM. Would you like to vote on Human Resources? The number has not been changed. It is the number that was in the budget.
Oh, the one that we were looking to reallocate last night, or no?
No, Human Resources. Director Green's account?
Oh, yeah. I'll abstain since I was a part of the discussion. Thank you.
That passes seven to zero to one. All right. Up next is Insurance and Claims, account one zero seven zero. That is on page eighty-four. Councilor Guyaski, would you like to put a number on the floor?
Eighty-four, okay.
Well, eighty-six.
Eighty-seven, thank you. Motion to approve $25,000 for Town Function Insurance and Claims, object number one zero seven zero, so moved. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to retract.
I'm sorry. I would try page eighty-six.
Yeah. Yeah, I was reading the wrong object line. My apologies. I move $983,635 for Town Function Insurance and Claims, object code one zero seven zero, so moved.
Second, Parker. Okay. Moved by Guyaski, seconded by Parker. Okay, you're up again.
For ten seventy, as we do each year, we receive an estimate from our broker of anticipated costs, which were thirteen across the board. You'll note that this is only a three and a half percent increase, and some of that is due to shifting allocations for the property portion between us and the Board of Ed.
Do we have any questions? Okay. We're going to take a vote on account number one zero seven zero. Council Bordalain?
Aye.
Council Pacino?
Aye.
Council Rusk?
Aye.
Council Jones?
Aye.
Council McBride?
Aye.
Council Guyaski?
Aye.
And Council Parker?
Aye.
I'm also an aye, but passes eight to zero to zero. Moving on to account one zero seven one, I'm beginning on page eighty-eight. Council McBride, would you like to move a number?
Sure. I'd like to move self-funded plans, account number one zero seven one, in the amount of $12,266,800.
Second, Rusk.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Rusk.
Ten seventy, as you can see overall, is under three percent increase, and it encompasses many key items: retirement, health insurance, H&amp;H, OPEB. So if you have any questions on anything in particular, I can try to answer those for
Council Bordalain?
Thank you. One of the concerns I hear a lot from citizens, you know, not only just town employees, but in general, is that they're having to pay for high deductible plans, and, you know, a lot of things are being caught. How much of this is self-funded by employees for the insurance plan?
The average percentages, I would say, range in the teens.
I'm sorry?
So we don't, the average percentages range in the teens. So there's nobody over fifteen, I want to say, right now, percent. If I'm not, fifteen and a half, there might be one group.
And what is the expected deductibles right now for our employees?
That is being finalized now. We have to have a final renewal in order to calculate that. And we have it in time for open enrollment, which is usually in later May.
And they, was there a shift to move people to more high deductible plans at one point?
Years ago, the town moved maybe 2017, 2018, if I'm not mistaken. There was a general move, as with many municipalities, to the high deductible health plan, and that's what all active employees have.
And what is our current deductible as of now?
It varies, oh, sorry, two thousand, four thousand.
And do we still have that ability where I think the town still pays a percent of that? I know in years past, there was, we kick in a certain amount, or what, where does that stand?
There is an HSA funding mechanism, which is fifty percent of whichever tier you would be in.
So if you were the four thousand, you're really only paying two, and if you're two thousand, you might only be paying a thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Assuming you hit that, you're given two. So if you don't use it or go past it, then you wouldn't have any costs. So it's up to the individual experience of that person.
Yeah, because I know that we, we're talking about retaining employees, and you guys constantly are coming and saying, you know, Richard, it's hard to find people for certain positions. And I think it's very important that our medical insurance is competitive, because you can't put a price tag on that. And that is, you know, a right to employees to have good coverage, and we, as municipalities, should be making sure we're taking care of people's health and well-being. So honestly, I kind of don't consider two and four thousand high deductible plans. Some of the high deductible plans I've seen have been six and eight thousand. So, and the fact that we're kicking fifty percent back, I think that's pretty good. What is, on average, co-pays looking like under this?
I'm sorry, that was my first answer to you. We're not above fifteen and a half percent on that. And I would agree, that's one of the things that really makes public sector a leader, is we still have defined benefit pension, which is hard to find, and I've seen those rates for external. So I think it's a great offering in today's landscape for insurance.
And the amount per week that's deducted for a single or family plan is still very low, as well as you were saying?
Comparatively speaking, from, yes, if you were to go out into some of the private sector, that's one of the benefits of being in public sector.
Right. Yeah, I just think across the board, you know, when we start looking at other object codes, that affordability needs to be there for everybody. And so, thank you for answering those questions, and I appreciate that.
Councilor Guyaski?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for Manager Burt. I noticed in the OPEB line, you zeroed it out. What is our account in that, for that, and what is, like, the percentage of liability?
Well, we're funded at about fifty-five percent, I believe. We actually, there's, the OPEB is broken into two parts here. The ADEC, you know, the required, the minimum suggested payment, required payment, that's under five one six zero, under the health retiree current. The next one is what we put in extra to try to gain ahead. So that, we are meaning the ADEC. It's not actually zero.
Okay. Just to clarify, so we're paying our recommended amount this year, but we're not adding extra to make up for the?
Right. We've been doing pretty good. I wouldn't want to do that every year, but as long as we, we can do, as long as we do the ADEC for a year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. That was my first question, so thank you for answering that, Councilor Guyaski. My second question is just if I can get an overall understanding of the healthcare expenditure, because there's been a lot of questions asked throughout this period, and I'm just trying to see, this is, looks like it's going up eight percent. So can you just give us a little understanding of how the town's going up eight percent, and what's contributing to that?
I would say the short answer is claims. I mean, there's projected claims, and we're looking at past history, going back a certain month with our broker. And, as you know, healthcare and medical is very expensive. So we're calculating that based on the projected increases that have been coming every year.
And do you have any reserve limits or anything like that? I'm just trying to get a little bit of understanding of the healthcare costs of the entire town.
Are you asking for a fund?
Yeah, do you have a reserve balance, fund balance in the healthcare line item? Is it self-funded, just claims?
There is a reserve. I can, look, we don't have up-to-date numbers. Our reconciliations are still being worked on, but we do have a reserve. I did want to also point out that the amount that you're seeing in this line item is only applicable to the employees that are being paid out of general fund. If there's any employees that are allocated for, say, the golf course or the ARPA-funded individual, the health insurance amounts are also allocated to those separate funds.
I guess I'm trying to understand, what is, what is required or requested or recommended to have with that fund balance for the, for the healthcare? Does MDF give you any information on, you should have two million, or three million, or a certain percentage of expected healthcare?
Twenty-five?
Yeah, that's a conversation that we can have. I don't know if there's a recommended that we've talked about previously.
Okay. So do we know the, that amount, or we can get it later, I guess you're saying?
I think that's fair, so we have accurate numbers, yeah.
I'll save my questions for later. Thanks.
One round.
I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the healthcare. It's such a big number, I'd like to know what the, what the balance is we have in reserve for the town, if that's possible.
I would say, I've been looking at it at two different things. What we have here is expected costs is differing than what we're maintaining from a fund perspective. So my budget is based off of the town's portion of expected claims, administrative costs through Anthem. There's not too much else to the coverage, since we're self-funded, and the balance is not contained here, I'll say that.
I guess what I'm trying to get to, but I don't think I can get an answer, is how much is, do we have in a fund that is a reserve balance for future healthcare claims?
Case we go over? Like, if we go over, or?
If we haven't had enough of the number, two million, is that sufficient, because, could we take five hundred thousand dollars less to decrease taxes on the taxpayer if that number's high? And I don't know if that number's high, I don't know what the number is.
I think the reconciliation would have to be done to give an accurate amount. I would highly question against taking anything out of here. We're running a little high this year. I think this is appropriate where it's at, because it's based off of projected claims, and I'd rather not underestimate when costs keep rising.
No, and I understand, I'm not looking to take from here for claims, I'm wondering how much excess balance we have in the corridor, you know, whatever that may be, if there, if we have any excess.
So as of our December reconciliation, which is the first one I could pull up pretty easily, we do have excess of about 1.8 million for the town portion. But once I get additional updated numbers, I can absolutely.
No, that's great, even that's helpful, because if it's, what's the budget, the total, the total all-in cash-out-the-door healthcare budget is five, six, so you have a $2 million reserve to go against that? Okay. Thank you very much.
And just to note, that, that eight point one is just for the, that active retiree health insurance, that's not the total picture of, the health insurance cost as a whole is not that much.
I'm sorry, point of, or, point of information, can you repeat that, please?
He was mentioning the eight point one percent increase, that was only for five one five three, for the active employees. But in, if you look, there's other categories, you know, like the retirees, that, that all is part of the health insurance.
Thank you.
Point of information?
Any question?
How much did we use last year out of there?
We don't use health insurance fund balance, we just.
Are you saying claims cost?
Which, can I keep going? She, she asked the question like, um.
She is asking a question.
You asked a question?
Is it claims that you're looking at? What we are, are you talking about claims?
I'm, I'm asking in reference to what Council McBride was speaking about, the, the extra, like, the fund balance. Have we had a dip into it in the previous year? And if so, how much did we dip in?
Okay.
To get kind of an understanding of how much we're using.
Okay, I can take a look.
Will you be able to get that answer, like, now?
As if we're voting tonight.
Yep.
Okay. Not a problem. No, it's okay.
I did have that right in front of me. We did dip into, on the town side, about a million dollars of the reserve last year.
So I do not recommend trying to cut that.
Do you have any more questions, Councilor? Okay. I don't see any more hands. So we'll take a vote. Count one zero seven one, Council Bordalain?
Aye.
Council Pacino?
Aye.
Rusk?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
McBride?
Aye.
Guyaski?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
All right. That passes eight to zero to zero. We are now on to the Board of Education, one zero eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I will be recusing from this object line due to familial financial interests.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilor Jones, would you like to put a number on the floor?
For Education, number one zero eight zero, in the amount of eighty-seven million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-four.
Second, Bordalain?
All right. So everybody's all settled in. I was wondering if maybe you could take the microphone, and we could pass it around, and everybody can introduce themselves, and then you can give us the synopsis of your budget, please.
Sam Kilpatrick, Facilities Director for the District.
Adrian Johnson, Board of Ed member.
Ian Thomas, Board of Ed member.
Susan Austin, Superintendent.
Bev Washington, Board of Ed.
Good evening, Dave Flag, Director of Finance.
Matthew Schulman, Board Member.
Andrea Ackerman, Board of Ed.
Jennifer White, Board Member.
Thank you.
I'd just like to, whoops.
Think I have to get closer.
It's on.
Think I have to move it closer to the side of my.
Right by my side. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll say something real short, because I'm just filling in for Jay tonight. So thank you for having us here tonight, and we look to have a robust conversation about our budget. And hopefully, we can answer all your questions, and do the right thing for the students and the community.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to thank you and say that this board has really worked diligently. We continue to look for efficiencies. We're waiting to see what's happening up at the Capitol with some of these state mandates. And I know that some of the increases that you'll see are affected by some of these state mandates. I think I had sent you a note to share with you some of the drivers. I know that we had a graphic that shared with you that wages, transportation, insurance, utilities are all going up, including some supply costs related to technology. Due to our Department of Defense, we're down about seventy students that are absolutely military-dependent. One of the reasons is the submarine. We had, we lost one to another port, and one isn't coming in till after October one. So we lost it before October one in another. So we're hopefully going to generate and have that again in the future. But for now, we're down a few. So just wanted to say that, you know, we really looked at every item, every area, and while it's a seven point nine percent increase, really, we don't see any further reductions at this point. But like I said, we always do look for efficiencies, and should there be any, you know, we certainly would utilize that. We're also looking at other grants. As you know, this is a pre-COVID-level service budget, and we did hear from our community around us that really it was time for ARPA to set, set sunset. So we are losing one hundred and twenty-four positions. And in that, we continue to look for grants, whether it's high dosage tutoring, whether it's DODIA. So we are really working hard to figure out how we can make up for some of these difference. And then, just in conclusion, I think, we all know, this is a community that really cares about education and our students. And I feel it with the community that I serve and my staff, and I feel it with our board, and with the Town Council, and with the RTM. So I know that you'll really consider this and, and think about education as kind of our future, you know, it's our legacy. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you. So before we start, we typically have one round in the, this budget session, and I'm going to be opening it up to two rounds, because I'm sure there's a lot we're going to have to discuss, and I want everybody to be able to plan how they have their questions and how they approach this, and to know that. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? Council Bordalain?
Thank you. First, I just want to say, you know, I commend everyone for their hard work on this budget. It's not easy. As a person who served on the RTM on the Education Committee, you know, I've seen the work that goes into this. I'm also a Fitch High School graduate and a mother, obviously proud mother of two kids who have come through the system, one which will be graduating this year. I am concerned. I'm a firm believer in closing achievement gaps. It's not about just the, you know, what we provide on the upper level, it's making sure every child has equal and fair access to education at every level. And I've seen the concerns firsthand, and heard the lack of tutors and things that are available. We're also coming off the heels of COVID. I know a letter was sent to you guys that said there were some of the council's questions. My questions were not on that. I had had all mine answered, because I attended a lot of the meetings, be virtually and in person. So those questions weren't generated by me, so, but I did read over, you know, some of that stuff. I do not feel it is indicative or appro, it's not appropriate to be cutting anywhere of any direct services to any and all students in our, in our district. I have concerns, because some of the budget recommendations, again, I can't choose where the money goes within the budget. I get the bottom-line number, and where you guys choose to move it within those object codes are your, your, your choice. I will say, at the very beginning, I was extremely concerned when I heard things like, you know, night school and services for English as a second language. First and foremost, we have a job to educate everybody at all levels, and that should be our goal. I was happy to see that you guys restored that line back. But there are some other areas where I actually am in support of a higher number than the percent that's on the floor tonight, to be honest. And I'll probably be moving a number of, such as that. But my concern is making sure that that money is moved into the areas that are going to directly impact students' improvement and closing achievement gaps. I know that you're in the process of looking at a new reading program, and I watched that meeting, and it kind of was, you know, well, the middle school, high school level won't benefit from that change initially. We need to find a robust program to identify those students that are not going to be falling under that new track, and make sure that they're getting the same fair and equal access to the tutors. And again, I speak from firsthand, where we've struggled to find and get access to tutors at the high school and middle school level through all the years. They said, oh, we don't have any high-level tutors in the building. Even the principal was acting as a, as a tutor. So I just, again, encourage, whatever number I vote on tonight, which will probably be higher than the number that's on the floor, I hope that those, that those monies are moved into areas where you can find cuts elsewhere, but to make sure paras, tutors, and anything directly impacting direct students' welfare and well-being and education are funded and funded at the utmost. English as a second language, I feel we're lacking there, and so forth and so on. Also, para salaries are deplorable, and I've been a para before, and I can say that from experience. So these are areas in which we need to look to improve. And I'll take my second turn later, but I'm in full support of funding our education and funding it at the utmost level. Thank you.
Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Superintendent Austin, thank you guys all for coming out. Now, I have a few questions. Again, I'm going to reiterate what I said a long time ago about using the ARPA funds or for hiring. At the meeting on February 12, when you presented your, your budget, the superintendent's budget, you told us that there was forty-three employees. Thirty-seven were full-time, and six were part-time from ARPA funding. How, how are we losing one hundred and twenty-four people? That's my first question.
At that first meeting, we were not at the seven point nine one percent. I think I had proposed a ten point five percent increase, and what we had done was we selected very carefully which positions would go away and sunset, and which would stay. And many of those were tutors at the building. But then we did hear from, you know, lots of people around this community that that needed to sunset in full. So that's how we got down to the seven point nine one percent. So now, it's one hundred and twenty-four all included in that.
Okay. So you're, basically what you're telling me is you hired one hundred and twenty-four people under the ARPA funding?
Yes. Most of them were tutors to close that gap, as Council Bordalain had mentioned. And I had said that we were very hopeful that that would happen, but we're still working on that. And also, the social-emotional learning that needs to take place. I mean, this has really been a hard time for our kids and our families, and, you know, our teachers and our staff. So we're still working through all of this together, trying to make the best of it and do the best we can.
Again, my concern was back when we first started using it, and you said most people were going to move over it into the retirees spots.
And we did do a lot of that. We did do those shifts with reductions in FTEs all along, but it wasn't, you know, possible to do it fully.
Again, part two of that is, or three, is we knew that money was not going to be funded because it sunsets. My concern then, as it is still now, is that we're still using the ARPA funds to fund people. How much do we have left of the ARPA fund?
Well, that is going to close out this year. I'll let Dave answer that, because he's been working on that. So it's going to make it through the end of the year, I believe, if we're going to close it. It has to be, and, you know, that's what the expectation is that the State Department's.
So the, the ARPA funds will close six thirty twenty-four in a few months. So there's, the forty-three people are in there that we ended up not moving into the operations budget.
How much is left?
Can I give you a number in a second? I just got to look it up. It's not much though, because it's only two months of salaries. That's it.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll look it up.
And I saw the answer to your questions. And some of the information, I'm still confused about. So, we've given people raises that we weren't expecting. Did we anticipate this when we voted on the budget for wage increases?
All wages increases are contractual, whether they're union or not. And then, you know, there are some administrative positions that have an annuity that go with it contractually in their contract. So, we have to honor the contracts that we give people.
But these weren't budgeted for, were they? Because that means, I'm looking at the answer to your responses. So...
Can you tell me which number?
Uh, number three. Let's go with number three, the superintendent's office.
Okay.
So, the salary budget is 560,000, 569,000 for three people.
Right. So, there was the ordinary increase that happens. And then, there was the annuity that is attached to that as well. The superintendent's salary is negotiated with the Board of Ed. It comes at the evaluation time. And then, the other two were really contractual as well. So, you know, they were, I don't... Dave, do you remember if there was anything else that I've missed in this besides with the 61K higher salary? Right. So, there were, yeah. And in the contract, there is a little vacation time payout and then the stipends along with that 2% increase.
That's a 2% increase?
No, there is the 2% increase that we had budgeted for. And then, there was the stipends that we, oh, the stipends, let me explain that a little better. The stipends for the Assistant Superintendent and the Director of Human Resources were covering administrative vacancies. So, we didn't have a principal at the high school at the beginning of the year and Dr. Phil Piazza covered that. So, there were some efficiencies and cost avoidances in that position. And then, also, we didn't have a financial director from all of the summer until Dave actually was hired in September. So, there were some cost avoidances that occurred with that increase with the stipends.
So, basically, what we would have paid for a principal, you used some of that money to pay?
Some of that, but not all of it. So, in other words, they did extra, you know, positions and services to keep us moving along.
So, we will not be doing that right now because everybody's in position, correct?
Everybody's in positions right now.
So, we won't be doing any other stipends that we know of?
No.
But we're still going to pay 61K higher?
No, that was just from FY '24. That's not for FY '25.
So, that number with their 61K did not include that under the 569K when they got their stipends?
That was for this current year that we're in right now.
So, they're using their original number from '24 is what I'm asking, to do the increase of 569K for three people?
This is on page, just to clarify for everybody, we were on the school budget book. It's page 5-87, if anybody else would like to join that page. And the discussion is on account, line item 105.
Right. And then, I think I had sent you the salaries of the admin by the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and the Director of HR. That should add up to that amount. And that is our salary with our annuity. That adds up to that 568, 569.
All right. I'll wait for my second turn.
Could I, could I just answer your question real quick? So, the balance left is 541,000.
For that, ARPA.
For ARPA, yep.
Counselor Rusk?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you to all the teachers for being here. I truly appreciate what you all do, especially those of you back there. Because I know that you're in the thick of it every day. I come from educators. I've always supported the education budget. If, since, to Director Morrison, if we pass the full budget, what would the mill rate increase be?
If we were to pass the full budget as presented?
Correct.
Not including the nursing services?
Including the nursing services and the budget.
Okay.
And the, and the auditorium.
The CIP you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm just looking at the handout because honestly, if it's, if it's not on this handout, I'd have to go back and calculate. The handout I was referring to was the one that Town Manager Board had provided.
Too many papers on my desk. So, I believe we're looking at a, at least a two-mill increase or 1.5?
That was the original budget was two.
1.9 was the original. With what we've taken out from the town council side?
Yep.
We're well over still a mill, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me see if I can pull up my spreadsheet and throw some numbers in there.
Okay. So, am I correct? One mill equals about $100 for every $100,000 your house is valued, correct? Okay. So, what I am struggling with right now is I absolutely respect all of our teachers. I would love to support this budget 100%, but I know that over 40% of Groton residents can't afford what they're paying right now. They are living paycheck to paycheck. And they can't do this. I mean, I, in my job, I see people who can't afford food. I can't support a budget that is going to take more off their table. Can we talk about the health insurance fund for a little bit? FYE '23, how much was budgeted for the health insurance? And if you can give me a page, that would be great.
I know in the last several years that we have under budgeted in order for the board to lower its budget. We've used some of the health reserve and it's been recommended by the community to do that. And we had, you know, we really had really good history. So, really in good healthcare times. And even during COVID, we didn't see an uptick in health services, I think, because the hospitals were filled and people weren't getting their normal surgeries and that kind of thing.
Do you have a page? I'm sorry.
I'm just talking about health in general, the health reserve, that we have used some of the health reserve in order to lower the budget in the past several years. And we were experiencing really good numbers at that time. But we've noticed that now, kind of post-COVID, although there's still COVID and there's still other illnesses, we have had an uptick monthly in our healthcare, in that, you know, a lot of people are experiencing surgeries and other health issues and needs. So, there has been an increase in, you know, the health. And yet, the reserve is lower.
So, what I have as numbers, correct me if I'm wrong, FYE 2023, $6.6 million was in the budget for healthcare and $11.6 million was the actual claims. The fund supported the rest of that. FYE '24, $6.8 million was budgeted. And as of January, you've exceeded that to $7 million already and could hit $14 million. FYE 2025, 10 million, is that correct?
That's right.
With 3.2 million to go into the fund. My concern isn't that this happened. My concern is that this wasn't done over stages. People can handle small tax increases. They can't handle a 7.9 or 13.9% increase. It just can't happen. People can't do that. So...
I would like to say, I can find it in the budget book on page 2-3. It's under Employee Benefits. And that would be line item number 80, 81, I would, if I'm correct.
Line item 81?
Eighty and 81, yes, combined for 82.
Are my numbers off?
No, I had a different number for 23, but I'm looking at an old file, so I'm not...
Okay.
I'm not sure what reference I had. But I had 7.3 million.
7.3 million was the actual?
23 budget.
Okay. Okay. But still, for years, this has been underfunded.
Right.
And now, we're trying to make up. Now, I realize we can't go backwards. But why, I just, I can't wrap my hands, my head around that. I'm also looking at concerns about contracted vacations. How many days can people get paid out for?
So, it's typically about five.
Okay. So, there's some pretty significant increases. So, your response to number five was that the increase was due to a higher-than-budgeted FYE 2024 salary, a small stipend and vacation payout. Why was, how much was the vacation payout? And why are we paying somebody higher than their budgeted salary? I'll take my next turn after that.
So, I'm going to let Dave deal with number five. There's a couple areas in that Director of Building and Grounds that we had districted funds for. So, you want to explain that, Dave? I think it was a 37.5 increase, but it wasn't...
So, you want to run number five?
Yep.
Yep. So, the 25, well, I've got the response on it. For fiscal year '25, we have $40,000 in the budget for contracted, contraction, vacation payouts. Right. In '24, the buildings and ground leader also had payouts from '23 that pay out in '24. So, you get the actual there and then we budgeted, you know, the district-wide amount in '25.
But that's just where we held the funds.
That's just where we held them.
It wasn't for that position, districted.
No. So, I put them there because they were, I just considered it operations. So, instead of trying to split it by function code, I put the full amount into that code.
Thank you.
Can I just notate for anybody who is looking in their budget book? This is on page 5-93, which would be the operations and maintenance and administration, where there is an increase in pay for the salary from 2024 to 2025 of 37.5% increase for one person's pay.
I did have an answer for the approximate mill rate too.
I'm sorry, for what?
For the approximate mill rate.
Yes.
So, if we were to take our budget as it is now with the changes that have been made to date and leave their budget as is, plus the nursing services, it would be 23.74 for the new mill rate, which is an increase of 1.61 or 7.3%.
Is that with the 1.41 for the, because I think you...
It is including.
It is including, okay.
It is including the 1.41.
Taking off the 5.75 for...
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. So, I guess if you're looking at this mill rate effects on homeowners, it's equivalent to almost the last one on that line. Thank you.
I know Counselor Jones had given us a scenario at one point of what that actually meant in dollars. And I think that was when the budget was more of like that 10.5, which we knew we had to do something about. I kind of remember, and I don't know if one of the counselors had said that, it's about $199 a year for every 100,000 of household.
Real close, 194, yeah.
194, okay. And that's, that's what it is, John?
Yes, per 100,000, yes.
So, in other words, like you had said, I think the average cost of a house at 300,000 would be $600 or $50 a month, right? And I think that's good to think about, the effects.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out and all the time that you spent putting into the budget. As you know, it's a difficult budget year. And I'll kind of refer to Counselor Russ's comments as well because I have concerns. Because my calculation is, as you just indicated, Superintendent, it would be over, you know, $600, $700 increase for everybody. So, it's a difficult budget year. And as you know, we've been, we've been reducing lots of budgets throughout, throughout the, throughout the town. So, I'm looking for some reductions here as well, just because I think we need to lower the tax rate. With that being said, I do want to point out, one thing I think is a glaring difference between people, how some people compute things. Although this budget is 7.9% increase, budget over budget, the way I look at it is what's the true impact to the taxpayers? And I just want to be clear because this budget is actually a 12% increase. And the reason it's a 12% increase is because your budget went up the 6.5 million. And because you only picked up 168,000 in grant money, that, almost that entire 6.5 million or close to 6.3 million or 6.2 million is being paid by the taxpayer. So, I look at it as not as a 7.9% increase, but an over 12% increase, because that's the increase the taxpayers have to pay. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear because that's how I look at budgets, how it's affecting the taxpayer, not from a budget to budget. That's not anyone's fault. That's, we only picked up $200,000 of grant revenue. So, it's, it's really a result of the state and so forth, giving us less grant money. So, that entire budget increase is reflected on the town. So, that's kind of what I just want to make the first point.
We've actually had a very good history though with Impact Aid. And I know that a payment was just made. So, we've really underrepresented the amount of budget in the past several years of those funds coming in. And fortunately, the town has received additional excess revenue, you know, in the name of education.
And that's great. Hopefully, more comes in. I just, I just want to be clear that I look at...
We do our due diligence with those Impact Aid forms.
Well aware. So, thank you. Healthcare, I'll talk about it if I have time. Just a couple specifics. Because again, I'm looking at line item by line. I'm trying to save wherever I can. The DOD grant for the 670, I read through it and it appears that there's a potential you may receive that. So, couldn't we, couldn't we move forward and reduce that from your budget? In any event, the DOD doesn't come forward, you come back to the council?
So, actually Congressman Courtney came to visit us. He's coming again. You know how he loves Groton. And he loves education too. But he had told us that there was problems in Washington around DOD funding and we weren't certain. But we also shared with him that we're 75 students away from making that, you know. And we've been really so fortunate. We've been receiving 500,000 a year, just about. And it's covered all of our technology needs since I've been here in 2014 with Dr. Brineer. So, it is disappointing. But I think that because of the submarine, you know, leaving before the October 1 numbers and the other one coming in after, that we might have this lull. I'm hopeful that in the future, that we will see that again. But for this year, we're not really saying, we're really saying that it probably won't come.
And just understand that I think it could be a possibility. So, I'm leaning on if it could be reduced.
You're looking at the half-full glass, right?
Yeah. And if it doesn't come, you know, it's like budgeting for something you may not need is my kind of thought. But anyway, that's just one of my questions. I have another question on open positions, because I've been tracking open positions. And you seem to range from seven to 10 and sometimes, you know, throughout the year. So, those are usually fully funded in your budget. So, would you consider not fully funding the seven to 10 positions that you have throughout the year? Because that's probably 500,000. Because that's probably $500,000, $700,000 that really don't need to be taxed on the taxpayer if those positions are going to remain open.
And that is the seven to 10 that are vacant?
Seven to 10 that are vacant. It seems like for the past few months, it's always been seven to 10 vacant positions. And my thought is, if those are always vacant, we wouldn't need to budget for those seven to 10 positions.
So what happens when they're vacant, especially if they're teaching positions? We have to hire someone who is really a certified staff member. So you're really still paying an entry-level amount, beginning teacher rate, most of the time, for those positions to cover when the, when we don't have it filled. There are areas that are really difficult to fill. Science is one of them, mathematics. We have several retirements in mathematics this year. I know that we've done a whole scheduling process with both the middle school and high school, looking for efficiencies wherever we can, making sure those classes are, you know, at the level that the Board of Ed expects, which is 20 to 24, at both the middle school and the high school. So, and we might not be able to offer all the courses, because we're really trying to be efficient with the scheduling. That's what I said. If, if there are ways that we can save that, and even in the elementary level, you know, we're not sure, as those, you know, submarines coming in and out, 750 children join us each year and 650 leave us. So it's a real transient community. So sometimes, in an elementary school, you might see a class size of 23, and then several months later, it might be down to 20, or it could be at 17, but then it could go up again. So it's really a balancing act. And I know that doesn't answer your question, but it just makes things a little more complicated. But we do pay for, in the substitute line, for coverage for when we have a vacancy for a teaching position. So we're still paying for it, but in another line.
Okay, I have many more questions, but only 17 seconds, so I'll go to, I guess, a larger question. Technology Education on 515 went up $256,000 for an increase of four and a half F T Es. What's going on with that department? Because that was a huge increase.
What page?
515. It was a four and a half increase in F T Es. The 24 budgeted six and a half, now it's gone up to 11.
Yeah, so the description there, so we had two coming over from AR. If you, if you can look at 514, maybe that'll help. Try to put some comments in there, just to guide some of the changes. Should be the page right before that.
They came over from AR, but we also had taken out F T E prior to that, so it was a wash, I remember. Originally.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at Technology Education. So there's the two from AR, the one new at G M S, and then we had a conversion from 1.5 to 1.0.
And those, those positions are all needed. I mean, that's just a significant increase in a department. Workers' comp went up $76,000, and pension went up $159,000, both over 20%. Are those estimates, or those?
You know, those, I just use the town's estimates. Just to make sure we're still in sync there.
And on page 2-2, for Instructional Services, went up $258,000, or 90%.
What's the number?
2-4, Instructional Services went up $258,000, or 90% increase.
Give me a second, I think I know the answer, but I just want to double check, so if you don't mind. No problem.
Lauren, do you know that? Instructional Services.
I got it.
I was looking that up. I was just going to point out that if you look in the 1920 budget, they were at 6.5, and then reduced by using ARPA. So they were at the 6.500 technology. They just swapped where the revenue was coming from for a couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, I think your time expired. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent and Board. I just wanted to sort of focus a little bit on philosophy of budget and management. And I'm looking at page eight of the responses to the questions that you sent. And the second bullet, I just want to read the first two sentences. Says, "The health insurance account has been unbudgeted for several years. In order to keep the board's budget low and to continue to use reserves in the fund balance, the budgeted amounts have been much lower than our true costs." I know you're, you're proud of the zero or low, low budgets that we have done, but in reality, dipping into the savings account isn't really a true reflection of the budget. And so we haven't really been dealing with a real budget. We've been dealing with, I don't want to say a faked-up budget, but a budget that's not quite where it should be and not really accurate. So can you just talk a little bit about the philosophy of why we don't take our medicine when it's really here, as opposed to pushing it down the road?
Well, there was a lot of caution when we were discussing that, you know, in the past several years. And I know that, you know, at the board level, we really were trying to be very thoughtful about that, and trying to, you know, look at the cost. And we were looking at our history at that time, which was pretty good. And then all of a sudden, that, those trends have changed. So we, we had said, I remember the last year, we had said, we didn't think we could go down anymore, but we were encouraged that, you know, we should really look at that health reserve and, you know, and have it slightly above the corridor, you know, have the reserve slightly above the corridor, but not so much. So we did take it again, so that we could, you know, improve our budget. And you, it, there was a cost to that. You're right.
So it, to me, it just seems like.
And so there's no way we can do that. I mean, that's something we really have to.
Well, you have, the last sentence of that paragraph says, "To rebuild some of the reserve in order to make any changes in the future due to the need to plan for runout claims with current plan." To me, it sort of looks like you're going to build a reserve up again, so you can dip back into it. And I.
I don't think that was the intent.
It wasn't the intent. The intent is just to try to get the reserve, right? I don't know if I want to get into healthcare now, but I just think it's a bigger conversation. But, you know, the reserve in and of itself, I think Counselor Russ started to mention, you know, we're going to dip into the corridor this year, just given the spike in some of our claims. So it was just to get us to a point where the corridor is at a healthy level, not, not to go above and beyond that, that's all. So we don't have anything built into the budget this year as sort of a reserve buildup, but historically, we've used it, obviously, to deflate the number.
And I know that I've talked to, you know, John Burt about even entertaining or looking into other health plans. Because while the HSA has really fared well during healthy times, we're looking at the state, we're looking at some other plans, but it would have to be something that would be positive for both the board side and the town side, because we're kind of in this together. So we're going to be doing a lot of research around that. And like I said, looking for those efficiencies. And if the state plan works out better for, you know, all of our employees and, you know, across the town and the education, then that might be something that we have to entertain. But we, we really have to have a stable health account in order to make a change like that.
I mean, my advice would be to deal with true numbers and let it just happen as it happens, and then we figure it out at that point, what's going on. But sort of covering it up over a period of years, dipping into the savings account. I, I often feel that we run our municipal government as we run our home budget.
Right.
And how we run our home. You would never do this.
The board and the council and the R T M, we're kind of working on this together to, to make sure that we could come in with a lower budget. And like I said, those were healthier times, so we felt pretty positive about, you know, we didn't have the crystal ball.
It's going to come back to, to bite you.
Yeah.
I just want to ask a philosophy on the number nine, which is there, I know we're not going to collect a bargain agreement, but I just looked at, we have your administrative salaries and such here, and thank you for sending that information over. It would be nice if we had it a little earlier, but thank you for, for getting that. Administrators have a 2.5% increase, and teachers have a 1% increase. And if the effort, if the emphasis on the teachers, I would like to see that number the other way around, that the focus is on the teachers and not on the administrators. That's just my personal view, but can you give me a little bit of insight into why it's that way?
She doesn't have a microphone.
Okay. Do you want to come up here, Lauren?
Hi, everyone. Lori Lepine, I'm the Director of Human Resources at the Board of Education. So the reason why the teacher percentage looks lower on the schedule is because the teachers have steps. So the increases are actually higher than that, whereas administrators do not have steps. So when you look at adding the cost of the steps in, the percentage would actually be higher. It's just showing the G W I for teachers. So the average step increase is anywhere from about 2.5%, and then you add in the additional G W I. That's the real teacher increase.
So would you be adding this 1%, .5, .5 together?
Correct, on top of the steps. Correct, the cost of the steps. Whereas administrators do not have steps, meaning they don't, each year, they don't take a G W I increase and, and step increase into the next lane of the salary schedule.
So there are two, there are two steps for teachers and one step for administrators?
There are multiple steps for teachers. Administrators have none. So in a traditional salary schedule, you have steps 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, plus a G W I increase attached to those amounts. So it's normal for an individual to go from step 1 to 2 to 3 as they progress. So the increase is actually, you have an increase between the salary steps, and then you have the G W applied. So the 1% does not, in that schedule, doesn't represent the all-in.
Okay.
Cost of the increase.
Probably not correctly, then.
Yeah, and, and the administrators don't have those steps. It's just a straight G W I increase on the salary.
Okay. On item number 12, you have all of the employees hired with grant funding. So we have a total of just under 70 F T Es hired with grant money. This is outside of any of the ARPA-ESA funds or any of the other money, is that correct? And these are ongoing grants that just continue to sort of roll over, is that? I'm just trying to understand.
That's correct.
You see, a lot of those are some of the federal entitlement grants, title grants.
Okay, so they just keep coming.
And the I D E A.
I just want to make sure we're funding people with grants and they're not.
Bruce, I want to just make it clear, though, that the D O Ds are for a five-year contractual time. And those really are like a project manager that would only be there for five years. It might be for some professional learning that would happen for five years, but at the end of those five-year D O D grants, we've already written another one to sustain some of this, but they, they're done. So after the five years, whether it's supplies or staffing, they really are completed. So that doesn't roll over. But with the titles and the I D E A, those are ones that come each year.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Franco?
I just want to jump in real quick. Just to respond to Counselor Jones, your questions about the health insurance reserve and all that, if we're going to be looking historically, we should also consider the broader scope of things. And the special education excess revenue and the Impact Aid reimbursements are money that's attached to education, that's gone back into the town, into the town's general fund. And if we look back historically, over the past eight years, seven years, it amounts to about $10 million. So as we're looking at historical things, it's important to note that.
There's a little bit more to that, just that V N A, I guess sometime in the past, V N A, the nursing services had been in the Board of Ed, it got taken out at some point forever ago. So we've been covering that portion for about 1.2 million a year. And then over that same timeframe for that, and the school bonds, it's about 30 million.
Point of information?
Ladies, Counselor Jones, time.
I guess just my, my point is to deal with accurate numbers on the year that we're dealing with them, is my, is my point.
Right, I get that. And we had cautions with that, you know, but it was the will of.
You have a question? Or would you like to take your time?
I just have a point of information, just to clarify what the town manager had stated.
Okay.
So what actually is the positive money, subtracting everything that you stated? What is the positive amount of money that offsets everything that actually does come back into the general fund from Board of Ed?
Well, if you count bonds, it's a loss. We spend more than what we've received from those excess funds. And then anything we do have extra, we put towards offsetting property taxes, which then just keeps everything down. It's, it's very complicated, and a lot of new words, it's not really a valid argument in a quick setting.
One?
You have a quick question?
Yes. So Mr. Burt, the money that comes in, because we start our budget July 1st, the D O D money doesn't come until after October, so are we technically front-loading the school budget until that time?
Whatever they, sorry, whatever they estimate, you know, whatever they estimate, you know, looking at the governor's budget, whatever the available information, they, they budgeted that, and that's what we plan on, yes. Did you say front-loaded?
Well, I'm saying front-loaded, because the money doesn't come until after the fact. So for the D O D, for the grants.
I'd rather them.
You're talking about Impact Aid?
Yes.
That's usually typically, we've estimated at about 4 million, 4.4. This year, I think it's closer to 6 million that it's come in.
But when does it come in technically?
It comes in over the year. So we might get a chunk, I think, what in the, do we get it?
Yes, you'll get a large payment in the fall, a large payment in the spring.
But after we start our budget July 1st?
September, October, something like that would be the first large payment.
Okay.
Yeah. So there is support, you know, as we go through the year.
But as where, the town supporting.
And then it starts to come in.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take my turn. So I'm just going to start off by saying that this whole budget, the town and the Board of Ed, I've thought of them in my mind as two separate functions, all of the town and all of the Board of Ed. And I honestly can tell you, I have never worked so hard on a budget since I have been in office. I, I would like to cover very quickly the Impact Aid, all of that. You may, there are years you get less than what you anticipate, and we still cover you. There are years you get more than what you anticipate, and we still cover you. So when the money goes back to the general fund, and then we put it back to offset the taxes, I mean, it's still covering. I mean, it's still there. So when people are still making these arguments that the Board of Ed should get that excess money, that will also increase your M B R if we just handed it over to you when it showed up. We've already given you the money, we fronted you the money to begin with and covered it. So when that money comes in, it's just offsetting taxpayer dollars. I, there was some, some kind of mention earlier that there was, there was something about the telephones that weren't in your budget in 2024. Can you touch upon that real quick? And some of the questions that were asked.
Is that just missing in the budget, Dave?
It just wasn't in there.
Yeah.
I mean, when I went back and looked this year, it's the development of the 25 budget. I just don't see it in there. So I'm just being transparent with you.
All right, because I just. So I'm just telling you, it's page 5-99, which it says telephones. So last year went up by 44, or expected to be over budget last year by 44,000. And then this year, you have an increase of 100, almost 169,000, which is 158% increase. So you, and the year prior to that, it was 100, in 2023, it was 172,000. So I'm not sure what happened there.
Which, which page, you know, I'm sorry.
5-99. 5-99.
Yeah. So that's, that's exactly what my comment was. For some reason, in fiscal year 24 budget, the costs associated with like our network phones, our desktop phones, was not included in the budget.
So the 106,000 wasn't, you didn't expect a reduction or something in the phones? Did you start a new system?
I just couldn't find it when I researched it.
And now it's 275,000.
Well, now we're just trying to account for those costs now.
For the cost for last year and this year?
No, just for 25.
Yeah, okay. So it was also mentioned that there were years that there was a 0% increase and how that puts you behind and things of that nature. But how I sort of remember historically how it went, was those zero years were the years that the new schools were built, and this was supposed to save you money. And so when I see that there's zeros, and I get the impression that, look at, we held your budget to zero, and, you know, we put a strap on you. From what my recommend, my memory was, was because of the new schools. And that's what I was told all along.
We did find cost avoidance and efficiencies during that time. We reduced FTEs. You know, there were a number of things that we were able to do by consolidating the schools. You're right.
Okay. And also, I'm gonna, we're probably gonna end up with more than two rounds. I'm just gonna let you know. But I'm gonna bring up the audit issues. You guys have been late filing your audits. It's supposed to be basically done in December. They are still being done right now. There was an attempt to carry over losses from the previous year, which you are now covering with grants, but that you were trying to cover, carry over into this current budget, which I think is a huge, huge issue. I'll wait.
Point of information?
Your point of information.
Just so I can kind of narrow in on my comments. Are we doing another, one more round? Are we doing two more? Just so I can kind of bunch of my speaking, sorry.
We probably should go to three rounds right at this time. I think that would probably be wise, because I do have a page full of things.
Well, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Point of information?
Yes.
Can that be addressed, what you just discussed, the audit information?
I'm not even done asking all my questions about the audits. I was just starting. So if you want to even address an audit issue, you are more than welcome, because I have a lot to say on it.
I know that my team had worked really hard with the auditors and really didn't find anything originally. But when we were missing a finance director for several months, Dave came in and very honestly said that he saw that things hadn't been accrued, that happened when you have a split payroll. And I think things had been done in the past that were past practice that he really found, and so brought to the attention of the town. So they did go back and look at that, and we accrued all of that for the year. So we cleaned it up, and they're continuing to work really hard. We're down a couple people in that office. So it's been challenging, but they've been working around the clock and doing a great job. So they've been working right along. I know John Burt has reached out to us several times and given us, when the auditors have come back and asked for more information, and we've responded and gotten them the information as quickly as we could. So it's been a working relationship with this. But it was actually us who found that issue when the new finance manager came in.
Found what issue?
Found that, that the funds in July weren't accrued in the year before, because July 1 starts the new fiscal year. So there was some misunderstanding about that.
Point of information?
How many years?
How many years?
For last year.
Just last year?
Yeah, yeah. From what I understand.
It was just last year. Have you?
It was just last year.
And have you looked at previous years?
I have not. I just haven't had the capacity to go back.
So you.
Although the auditors did ask some questions about some former years, so that we got information back to them on, I think.
I mean, they've asked some questions, but I have not had the chance to go back and look at 22 or 21.
Okay. Counselor Bordalon?
Quick question. So your assistant finance person is no longer with you guys as well?
We have just hired someone, and then we have someone who has been out on kind of leave for a little while, and.
We don't really have an assistant.
No.
First thanks to me and the team. So we did hire someone new just recently, a few or so ago. And then our key person, the person that sort of, you know, does most of the accounting, has been the one that's had some challenges and has been helping.
So I, too, struggle with the audit problem, but I do not feel today that I can put that on the backs of the students in our district, nor the paras or the teachers. That's an internal problem that needs to be rectified, but I don't think that depicts my decision today on the number. My, though, concern is, what are we looking? We talked about the one, which I think teachers should have more than that, and the two for administrative, two-point-something for administrator. What are we doing for our aides and our paras? That's my first question. What percents are they getting in this budget?
Yeah. That's another Lori question. It's in the schedule. Okay. And that was negotiated. So as you know, these are all negotiated. We've been negotiating for four years. There's some efficiency with that as well. And we really did our due diligence. I know that Councilor Parker has helped us out on multiple negotiations, and we really appreciate that. But the, the board has always done negotiations in good faith. And we, we did come to a solution that was, you know, rectified by both groups.
Point of information?
My eyes are not as good as yours.
Counselor Bordalon has the floor.
Portion, they were in the, the most, the questions that you all sent us?
I didn't send any questions.
Well, the town council did, I think. Did we send all the questions to the town?
Yeah, I did.
So you must have gotten it.
I do. I have it in my computer.
It's in there. So if you're looking at it, you'll find it.
But I want it for the record, because people at home are asking. So can you say, what, what is the percent increase for paras this coming year?
Well, you can tell them, you got it right there, too. So I'll say it, though. The paraprofessionals and the paraprofessionals, the tutors and the LTAs in 2023, 2024, they got a 2% increase. In 2024, 2025, they're getting a 2.2, 2.25% increase. In 2025, 2026, they're getting a two and a half percent increase. And the same thing in 26, 27. The paraprofessionals, para two only, they're getting in 2023, 2024, they're getting a 6.10% increase. The next year, they're getting a 3.40% increase. And that's all that was negotiated for, oh, and then in 2025, 2026, they're getting a 4.30% increase. And then 2026, 2027, 2.60% increase. But you have it, so you can look at it and then.
And the largest percent, of course, was that first year, and it was retroactive. So it was 6.1.
Yeah, it's definitely been slow, and it's unfortunate, because, you know, I have heard from folks that say that they weren't happy with the negotiation. So I don't know who's representing on the negotiation side of the exact paras, but that's a whole nother topic. My concern is making sure that they're properly paid, because in comparison, to Lern and other districts, we are far below. Norwich pays over 20-something an hour for their paras, and Waterford pays more, and Groton has been slow to the draw for many years. So again, that has to be at our forefront. It is important that they're being paid equitable and fair. And from what I've heard, negotiations have not been in favor of the people that were really going to be benefiting or should be benefiting from those wages.
I just, can I just add that in negotiations, we do look at competitive wages. We look CASBO and CAPS do a good job of really, and Southeastern Connecticut do a good job of laying that out for all of the different negotiation cycles. So we do look at all of that in every negotiations to make sure they're competitive.
And I understand, I'm asking because people wanted to hear from home. I'm in support of an increase at the Board of Ed, so I'm, you know, you don't have to, you know, don't push back this way. I believe, I know that I've said you have it. I know I do, but I wanted to put it on the record. I'm in full support of education, and my concerns are, we can look at the ebbs and flows. I do have concerns, as I stated, I can give you 10%, it's where you spend it, you know. You know, you give your kids money, and they go out, and then they say they want more. Well, you didn't budget it. So my concern is hoping that you guys do go back around the table, that you guys originally agreed, whatever number is allocated, which I'm for the increase, that you make sure within that budget, the money's directly impacting the students. Concerns with fairness in sports, equal and fairness for men and women's sports. I'm not seeing things allocated evenly, effectively. Site budgets are being cut. So those are my questions. That's my question. What are we doing to enhance the welfare and well-being of the students with this budget?
Well, I, I called it a level service budget. So really, the academics and the extracurriculars, the athletics and the arts are still all there. So some of the things that really bring kids to school are there. So I think that we've really tried hard to make sure that that was happening.
And I just think it's, it's vital that we are using this money, as I stated before, to close achievement gaps. If we're truly here for education, it should be across the board. What cuts did you make at the higher level that were not teachers, not paras, not the direct tutors? Where else did you find cost savings that you tried to be equitable in your cuts?
We went across the board. So there were leadership positions, there were custodial positions, there were secretary positions, there were, you know, across the board, teaching positions and tutor positions. But I would say that the ARPA/ESAR had more of the tutor positions in it for that closing of the gap.
Again, I, you know, so I questioned the town manager, that $50 a month would be to homeowners?
For.
The mill rate increase.
Yeah, for, for homeowners. The, for instance, the other five or six hundred we talked about for a year.
Not that homeowners aren't struggling, but someone who, you know, maybe isn't a homeowner at this time, they would not be impacted by that increase directly.
Other than a possible, the owner, if they're leasing, rate that trickles down.
Yeah. I can't put a price tag. I'm willing to pay the extra $50 myself for the sake and welfare, well-being of the children. I do think that we can find other efficiencies, but that's up to the task if you guys do. I just hope that we don't see cuts directly impacting our students, and that's where I'm extremely concerned. That's, that's where I, my motivation is.
Quick question. The mill rate also applies to all the car taxes, too, correct?
Counselor Parker?
Thank you. If, could we, I want to ask about the step increases for the teachers. Could you give me those numbers, unless that's not allowed?
I think you had them, Lori, right?
Yeah, I don't have them yet.
If she can look those up, because then that might give a true picture to not only the council, but to the audience. And just to let people know, I believe I only do the administrators and teachers' union negotiations. I don't think I've been on the others.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, because I'm not a paraprofessional, so I just want to make that clear. I'm only on two of them.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with this, and I know others will be. I don't know if I can do a 7.9 increase. And I'll be honest, because I knew this was coming down the road, and I was worried about this happening. I don't think we planned well, honestly, because we.
A lot of this is out of our control. There's a lot of.
Some of it is out of our control.
There's a, well, there's a lot of inflationary costs, utilities costs, there's a lot of state mandates that we are unfunded. So there are a lot of things that have happened that are beyond our control.
To a degree.
Just like at home.
To a degree. Like I keep repeating, we shouldn't have used the ARPA funds to hire people. That's a big concern, because we knew.
It wasn't only to hire people. There was even HVAC included in that, that I took on responsibility through ARPA/ESAR as well.
I remember we asked about grants. I know, I found out about a grant and for it done to you and Mr. Burt.
So ARPA/ESAR is different than ARPA that the town has. In ARPA/ESAR, it was for education, and it was for closing the gap. It was expected that we hire personnel and tutors. We actually got a high dosage tutoring additional grant for mathematics just recently. And that is being used all year and through the summer and into next year to help close that gap. So that was what was expected of us.
Okay.
So.
And our numbers are not showing it.
What do you mean?
Our numbers.
Well, no, it takes time. Right. We're, we're working on it.
I'm actually looking at other districts, and their numbers have gone up. And some of them have used their ARPA fundings the same way.
As an alliance district, we're one of the highest alliance districts next to Vernon and Arter. So just saying.
And that's a concern, that's another concern, that's going to be, hit us down the road, because we won't have alliance district money down the road either. So we'll be covering that. So however dollar amount we get for that, we're going to lose, and then we're going to have, the town's going to have to cover that. So that was, how much do you think that will be if we lost that money?
I don't have any idea. And we're in alliance for a five-year period. We've been through one year, and we have about four more years to go.
But no, how long have we been an alliance district? Oh, my time, thank you. How long have we been an alliance district? Because I believe that started when Dr. Grenier was here.
It was. So there were five years, they were going to graduate us. I wrote a testimony. I worked with our representatives, and they were able to have another five-year journey. So that started over a year ago. So we have about four more years left.
Counselor Parker?
I had heard from our state representatives, we are at, if we were cut from ARPA, it's about $6 million cut at this time.
Thank you.
I mean, not ARPA.
The alliance.
Alliance district, excuse me.
So 6 million and change? Okay. So we're going to have to cover that, thank you, cover that down the road. So on top of putting the nurses into your budget, and we're still paying a bond, we're spending a lot of money. And we got to figure out how we're going to balance this all out. It was got to be balanced somewhere. And it's, we've already started cutting in other places to try to cover everything. So another $6 million, that puts you at 12 in the following years, because we're going to have to at least figure out how we're going to budget this in. After five years, we're going to be paying at least 12 to 13 million dollars that the people are not going to be able to afford.
There's a lot of conversation about a blueprint that CAPS has put out to equalize this and to reformula, reformulate the, actually, the ECS. So it's hard to tell. We don't, none of us have a crystal ball. But the state is looking into how that is funded anyway for everyone. So right now, you know, we have not lost anything in the 10 years that I've been here. I thought at one point we were. I don't know if you remember that in 2018. That's a pretty tricky year.
I was here. Yeah, I'm, all right, I'm done.
Just want to chime in here a little bit. So those are all good points to consider. I mean, and we've had those conversations internally as well, looking forward. But we've also had the conversation about what values schools bring to a community. And as we move forward here, I think it's important to note that, you know, there's a lot of desire for economic development and attracting people to come live in Groton. And one of the most important things people look for, young families, are schools and strong education systems, dynamic education systems. And for that, that requires a community investment. And that's what we're discussing right now. Now, I can appreciate Counselor Bordalon's comments about the internal allocations of the money that we are allocated, whatever that final number may be. I would also encourage the council to consider an increase, maybe upwards of a 9% increase instead of a 7.9%. Internally, that was one of the numbers, that was the range that we were looking at, and a lot of us were very comfortable with, that provided a lot more support services. So what you're looking at is a very slim budget. You know, we, we really can't cut any more out of it. So while we can discuss the allocations in So while we can discuss the allocations inside the budget, that's mostly us internally. And if you have feelings about that, I would encourage you to send those in or, you know, state them for the record tonight. We are looking at some major changes moving forward. Health insurance is one of them, and a number of other things as well. The alliance fund is tricky business. I mean, there is, there is a double-edged sword there. As much as we appreciate the funding, it is also attached to overall performance. So, you know, we do need to improve our performances, our scores, but with that comes the risk of the alliance funding being taken away. So again, it comes back to investment. And, you know, what do you want to have here that's going to attract the families that we're hoping to attract? And there was a recent economic meeting, the Planning and Development Department hosted a talk down at the Nautilus about a month, month and a half ago. And there was a board in that meeting, and I've seen, I've seen a picture of it, where people were putting dots on what they thought attracted people to Groton, to move here. And if you look at that picture, there's six squares, and something has to do with like stores and work and things like that. There was one square that was for schools. And there was not one dot in those, in that square. So the council should think seriously about that. And the people that were at that meeting were people that were highly interested in economic development. So if you're looking to attract people to Groton, we have a massive new development being built up on the old sealy grounds there. We have a number of old hotels that are being converted into living spaces, long-term living spaces. If we want to attract young families here, we have to invest in the schools. And as far as like long-term financial management, we can debate the excess revenue funds and the impact aid reimbursements. That's, there's a lot to unpack there, as the town manager noted. However, we also should think about things like a non-lapsing fund and other ways we can creatively work with our budget. But at the end of the day, you know, we do have some hard drivers here, which is, you know, inflation, healthcare costs that are immediate, and they need to be dealt with. So I would encourage you all to support the number that's on the floor and consider a possible increase as well, as an investment in our future, in the community. Thank you.
I would just like to respond to that and say, I think everybody up here has taken all of that into consideration, and it's nothing we haven't already thought of. So thank you. Mr. Schellman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you refer to page 1-10, that compares us both to the alliance districts, which are considered our peer group at the bottom, and local districts ranging from Old Saybrook to Ledgerd on the top chart, you will see that our district on a cost per pupil is among the lowest in the area. I don't think I need to add anything more, other than to say, perhaps, perhaps the investment in education is worth the pain, because without the pain and without the investment, the only ones who really suffer are the next generation. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
I have a bunch of questions, but the more I'm reviewing it, they don't, they don't really make that much of a difference, because they're small dollars. And I'm just looking at this thinking, the real nut is the healthcare. At the end of the day, we haven't prepared for that. That's half the budget. You'd be here asking for a 3.8 or 4% increase, it wasn't for the healthcare. So I don't, I don't know how we resolve these issues. But, you know, I still look at this corridor, the corridor, even with your analysis, has 2.0, almost $2.9 million of a corridor reserve. And I'm struggling with that, because here we are saying we're going to tax the residents over 10%, but we have $3 million of a corridor reserve. So I'm struggling with the whole healthcare. I think we need to do something to fix that, because that's the issue. I mean, all these other things are minor. I mean, it's not 2% here, 1% here. We didn't, we're not in good shape with the healthcare. That's, that's a huge issue. I mean, I don't know how we, how we get around it, other than we need to negotiate with the unions, redo contracts, whatever it is, because even the thing I heard when someone earlier said that our cost share is only in the teens, I mean, that's, that's miniscule. That's, it's just our, our healthcare is crushing our budget, and it's crushing our taxpayers, and that needs to be fixed, because it's, it's the whole nut. So I don't think we can solve that tonight. But that, that's a concern, and it's not going away. So I don't really have any thoughts, other than, you know, what can we do with that corridor, that $3 million? Can we use some of that to offset some of this budget issues that we're having? And then come back and fix the problem for reals, is what I'm thinking, more of a longer-term plan, because you're just going to, I mean, those numbers you have, you know, the future numbers, 10 million budgeting five, and it could be up to 16 million? I mean, there's something, there's something wrong with, with our healthcare plans. I don't, I don't know what it is, but I read somewhere where our stop-loss insurance went up 46 or 47% for over things $200,000. I mean, that, my understanding is you have stop-loss insurance to cap your exposure beyond certain amounts. So why is that going up 47%? I mean, I just think there's a healthcare coverage concern that's blowing, I mean, not just this year, but the, somebody mentioned the past three years. I mean, that's what's killing, killing everything here. It's what's impacting the taxpayers. So I think that's what we, as a, as a town, need to fix, in my opinion. So I don't, you know, just adding that for comments, because all these small amounts aren't really material compared to that number. So that's all I have. Thanks.
It's definitely one of the largest drivers in this budget.
Yeah, in the past, in the past three budgets. I mean, it's not, and it seems like it's a Cadillac plan beyond belief, from what I'm, from what I'm looking at. And maybe it needs to be reviewed further. I don't, you know-
Well, I think we've already started that process, Counselor McBride, that we do know that there's a state plan, and there's other plans that might be more efficient. So we are working on that.
Well, that's kind of what I'm wondering. Can we use some of this corridor to go into a different plan, whether it's, even if it's a premium-based or something else, to not, because this, this plan is not working. You know, whatever this corridor reserve, it just doesn't-
Not at this time. It passed in the past, but you're right. The experiences that we've had, along with, you know, some of the funds that we've taken from it, have caused us to be in this situation.
Yeah, which is sad, because everybody wants to give the schools what you need. I mean, that's, but that healthcare number is just unbelievable. I mean, it's, it's crushing us, so that's all I can say. Thanks.
I get it.
Counselor Broad, I owe you a follow-up on the instructional services. So in that number, it's a $300,000 investment in a right-to-read program?
That's one of the unfunded mandates, but it's really important, and so we're looking at new resources so that we can do the right thing for our kids in shifting the balance and making sure that we have the science of reading K through 5. So that's what that's for.
Could you repeat that number?
$300,000 for right-to-read. It's not, it wasn't the DOD.
And to that end, if you're looking for results in testing, I believe once this right-to-read, the literacy, science-based reading curriculum is implemented, you will see a marked increase over the years. There's a lot of documentation and data with that across the country.
You would think. And actually, if we can get the core instruction better, we're not going to need as many of the more, the additional things. So that's really essential, that this is really for core instruction for every child in every classroom, K through 5.
Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really think Counselor McBride hit the nail on the head. Like, we all want to fund you 100%. We all want our teachers to get astronomical raises, and I'll be honest, I saw that 5% and 1%, and that's insulting. So even if they get step raises, that's insulting. Our town manager didn't get a pay raise this year. He took a hold, because he knows that this is a tough budget year. I'm just putting that out there. But really, what this comes down to is really poor management of money for the last two I can tell you, I have been on the RTM for four years now. I never once heard about health insurance and all the issues that were going on with health insurance. At least it was not elevated to be important. It is a shame that our children in this community are suffering because of poor budgeting. This could have come up year after year and said, you know what, we budgeted for 6,000 or 6 million, and we really spent 11, so we're going to have to raise this this year. But instead, it kind of got, it was, I never heard about it. So I'll say that much. I never heard about it. And I was very involved in the budget process for the past few years. And we can talk about concerns with everything else, but really, we are looking at having to pull out money to cover the health insurance fund, because it wasn't funded properly for the past few years. And that takes away from our children. So I, I can't support a 7.9% increase in this budget. I just can't. Because we do this, and as much as you want to say it only goes to the, the town or the property owners, it doesn't, because anybody who rents, it's going to be on them too. Because when somebody owns a home and their, their taxes go up, it goes on our renters. And anybody who owns a car, it goes on them. They can't afford that. So we're going to have to figure out some ways to make this work. And we will, we have made cuts across the board. This is not the only budget that we have made cuts to, but I don't know how we can put this on, on our families right now. I mean, it's been said, we hand out food to 300 families every Friday, every fourth Friday of the month. Those are Groton families that can't afford food.
I'll end with that. Thank you. So I'm going to get back to the audit. So I sat in a meeting, the auditors have talked to both the town and the, and the school, and what they're saying is they're going to do a deeper dive now into the budget, I mean, into your audit, because of the problems that they're seeing. Because they saw that you were trying to carry over a loss from one year to the next, because you're so far behind, you're asking, how many extensions have you asked for?
I don't know. We don't file since I'm not on-
After three, you have to go before a board, just to let you know. You have to go before a board and like, explain why you have had to ask for an extension. This could affect our bond ratings. I understand you have a new staff member. I understand you've had a gap in there. I understand you might be down people in your department. But in all honesty, when the town and the auditors keep asking and asking and asking, you have to do something. You have to pivot and change and like, bring people, like, the whole department.
That's what we've done.
Well, you did. At a certain point, you did that. At a certain point, you did.
We absolutely did.
Right. At a certain point, but it took getting to that point, which I think is an issue.
They didn't see anything in the beginning. So we weren't asked for anything in the very beginning.
That's not quite how it works. You have things that you have to submit, and once, I mean, I know how an audit works. You submit your, your numbers, then they ask for some random things so they can go and do testing. I mean, you should be in the testing phase right now, and that's going to take a couple of months. We're not going to give the audit results till after our budget is well-done. So-
And as soon as they've been asking, Dave Plague has been responsive to them. And it does take kind of the team to pull some of the information together, because it's a lot of information, but they've been doing that.
I don't mean to be disrespectful, but being responsive doesn't give you four, four times you're asking to delay, that you don't ask for to delay four times when you're being responsive. And I'm very sorry to say it that way, but I do have issues over this audit, major issues. And this also does affect the MBR, because my thoughts are, if there are some of these issues, and there's some kind of things that we've asked for answers from you, like we sent a request for some questions on salaries on April 2nd, we got a response yesterday. I mean, I don't, it wasn't too responsive.
I just got the email yesterday.
It was sent on April 2nd.
Well, I got it yesterday, so I sent it forward.
On, so like, the director of facilities, on this page that you sent us, it says he's making in 2024, 144,000, and then 2025, 147. In the book, on page 5.93, 2024, it said he's making 136, budgeted, and then estimated he's going to get 152. And then for 2025, he's estimated to get $187,000. So when you say the 2024 budget was for 144, that doesn't match numbers in your budget books. So can you square that?
Was that, was that the issue with the?
Include the stipend and any vacation payouts, yeah?
I'm sorry, what was that? 5.93. Administration?
Yeah, so I think we had answered that on that spreadsheet. It does include the stipends and the vacation payout.
Okay, so the 2024 salary was 144,000. Where is that in your budget book?
Well, I see the 23 was actually 143. And the budget for 40, I don't know why it would have gone down to 136, but maybe that wasn't with the stipend in them.
I mean, what was the question?
So if you look at Administration 105, on that 5.93, they're asking about, you know, the facilities director and the salary not matching the 144, but I see the actual in 23 was 143. But it doesn't look like it was budgeted in 24 for more than that, so I don't know why. If you wanted to go on, he can look for that.
No, I need an answer as to, sort of, I can't, I can't find that number in my budget book.
All I know is the actual for the year before in 23 was 143, so.
Right. And then you have, for 23, it was 143, and then for 24, it was 136, but you're estimating to 24 to be 152. So the facilities director has, it said 136, he's going to make $16,000 more than that. It doesn't square with the other number that you sent me. And then you're saying in 2025, he's going to get 187,000, which is, like we discussed earlier, $51,000 increase.
No, so the one-
At 37.5%.
So fiscal year '25 includes the district-wide contracted vacation payouts?
Hmm?
That's why that number says 187. That's why that, that's why that number says 187.
It's then 40,000.
So that's for the entire district. So we just put it in operations.
So you took the entire department and put all the vacation time into his pay, is what you're saying?
Not the entire department, but just those that were eligible for contracted vacation payouts at the end of the year. We put it in operations.
But you put it all into his-
Into his code.
His salary. That's what you're saying right here.
It's not a salary, it's just a code.
Well, it says Administration, count 105, and there was one employee, and he's going to be, it says what it shows here.
It's just a code. It's just an account code, that's all it is. So it has nothing to do with his salary, it's just, that's where 40,000 is.
Why would you not put that somewhere else? Why would you put it in one individual's?
Well, we could have picked, I guess. We just picked operations, thinking operations was sort of a broader budget code. We could have put it in superintendent, we could have put it in finance, I guess. We could have put it in finance, I guess.
So it's not specifically for him?
It's not, no.
So I'm just going to very quickly say, these are some of the reasons I have a concern about raising the number up, raising the MBR up, when I can't look at your budget and understand it. Like, the numbers just don't match. They don't jive. There is audit issues. There is a lot of things going on here. And if we raise it, we can't bring it down. You can not bring it down. So if things are uncovered at certain points, it cannot be lowered.
Well, we're trying to explain these as best we can so that you understand more fully. You know, you all have asked some good questions. I'm sorry I didn't get it until yesterday, but you've asked some good questions, and we're trying to answer them.
I understand. I think I do understand. I think I do.
Point of information.
Your question?
So our budget book is set up a certain way. Is there a possibility that the education budget book could be done in the same way so that it's very transparent, very open, and we can understand it a lot better?
Thank you, I'll answer that. I have watched the Board of Ed meetings, and they've had this discussion. They are looking for new software. They are looking to try and emulate some that we are doing as well. And that's, I think, a discussion that we'll be definitely having in the future to try and make it more in-depth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, and just to add to that, we did take a vote on February 23rd in a committee... Was it a committee of the whole meeting? That we're going to form an ad hoc budget process committee no later than June 1st and to reform the process. And yeah, we did specifically discuss using the town manager's model as a format that we would follow.
Point of information?
Your question?
This number does not include the school nurses, correct?
No, it doesn't.
You are... May I ask another question?
Quick question.
Quick question. Since we're moving over the school nurses, have you guys calculated their FICA and everything, or no? Is that going to be calculated under you?
I know that I've talked to John Burt about looking for efficiencies because they're no longer with the VNA. They're going to be hired by us directly. So there are going to be some cost efficiencies we are expecting. So I have been in communication with him. And I think the number that he had... John, if you can help me with this. The number that you had for last year is the one that we were using for this year. So there wouldn't be an increase in that. Is that right?
When we spoke, we settled on, I think in our budget, we originally were looking at 1346. Around 570, is that correct? Does that cost three digits?
1346.
And then we talked about 100,000 less because of the savings. So 1246573.
73.
3, okay.
Even though they were under contract with the VNA and it was going to escalate, we were able to find those efficiencies because we're hiring directly with them. So it wouldn't increase from one year to the next.
Councilor Jones, did you have your hand raised?
Just to piggyback a little bit on Mayor Franco. And we're looking at the Director of IT. Did you do the same thing with the Director of IT? And stick all that contracted vacation payout onto his salary?
Fiscal year 20, for the estimate column, that's where it is.
It's a little confusing because we did it one year in one and one year in another, right? Is that how it worked?
So basically, you're just lumping a whole lot of vacation pay, sticking on one person, and later come back and divide it all up to all the people.
Well, as it gets paid out, it goes into individual function codes. We're just trying to consolidate it for estimated purposes or budgeting purposes.
Is this a normal way of doing accounting?
Accounting?
Budgeting?
I guess we could have estimated, you know, based on individuals and what their payout would have been. But, you know, it's kind of their choice at the end of the year.
I don't think we did that for the Director of Technology. If you look, his salary is the same in the budget book.
They're talking fiscal year estimate 24.
They're looking at the 25.
Have you done this on other areas too? Or is it just these two? People's vacation pay together and just...
No, this is the only spot.
Can you just explain to me? I don't understand.
Business office? Business office on page 5.89 has a large increase in 24 as well. 5.89. In 24.
This sort of comes back to my original question of having accurate budgeting going on. And I sort of feel that we're not budgeting accurately and not putting in costs where they should be at the time that they should be. So I kind of share Councilor Franco's...
So you're looking at the estimate column?
Yeah, that's $37,000 increase from in 2024.
Yep, so the previous business manager had a payout when he left of accumulated vacation time. And then the salary now of the current business manager versus the previous business manager is higher.
And that's based on competitive wages and also kind of the supply and demand. It's very hard to find a business manager.
I understand that. Is there... Town Manager Burt or Superintendent? Can you use the town accounting system? Town Manager Burt, is this an accounting system that can be used across the board for the entire town?
Like this formatting, you mean?
Yeah, or our system.
Well, that's what they talked about, is they're forming a committee to look at that.
I'm just asking, the question is, does our system work for municipal accounting?
It does.
That's one. Just, it might make things a little more transparent.
Dave Flag was the business manager or the finance director of all of Hartford Public Schools. So they had used even something different that he has looked into. So I think we're going to look at different options.
Okay.
And try to make that a first step.
We're just seeing, you know, we're just getting the feeling that things are a little wonky, and we would like to unwonk them.
Well, and when he came in, he's done a lot of that work to try to figure out where things had gone and where things need to be. So he's already done some of that for us. So, you know, we will continue to do that.
Can you just... Can you just explain to me? I just don't understand this word corridor. These are... There's a lot of words. Like efficiencies, I like the word savings. I just find it... Efficiencies is not a good word, but savings is more truer. But can you just explain to me? I don't know what corridor means. What's that mean in health insurance? Corridor, it's your corridor?
I don't know if you remember the drawing that we've ever brought you, but the corridor is really the expectation of funds that need to be in the health reserve. And then we've had funds beyond the health reserve. So we had shown you a cylinder with a picture of the corridor and then the additional funds. And I think you know the exact amount of what is expected in the corridor.
It's usually 25% of your expected claims by definition.
Is kept in like a bucket?
Yeah.
That you can... And that's called a corridor?
Yeah.
So if I look at this, it says the corridor balance needed is $3,635,000. That's your estimate of what needs to be there? That's sort of coming down the line.
And that's for both the town and... Oh, that's just education? Okay, okay.
Okay. And the remaining amount that's currently sitting in there is $1,938,000 from this sheet you sent. And then the reserve, the F-24 reserve used, that's the money you had in your healthcare reserve, a separate bucket that you've moved into this. I'm just trying to understand what these numbers mean.
Not that we moved in, that's just how much we've...
Dave, do you want a microphone?
Sorry about that. So it wouldn't be money that we moved into it. I'm just going to pull up the schedule if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I'm just trying to understand how it works.
...at the same time. So that would be the estimate of the reserve that we would use this year to cover claims, healthcare claims, that are above what we had in our budget.
So you're estimating... The corridor is just sort of like a balance that sits in there to cover things out of the estimated 10 million or 14 million. So you keep that amount in there?
It's separate. It's not in the 10 million, it's separate.
And then the reserve estimated through 2 million. So the bottom number, the 806,000, is the amount into the corridor. So that's money you need to put into it to get that up to where it is.
I'm just articulating that that's how much we've... If you think about the corridor sort of your baseline, maybe that's as low as you want to go. All I'm articulating is, given our claims estimated through February, we'd be 800,000 below that baseline.
Okay. Where are you getting that money from?
It's sitting in a reserve. Separate fund, per se.
Okay. Is that the reserve we've been tapping all along?
Same one.
Same one.
But never into the corridor.
We're just trying to slice it between what a healthy corridor level would be and anything above that.
So if you remove, move that.
Councilor Borderline for your third time?
Thank you. As I watch these meetings and been involved, I've been asking for four years for an updated software. I was... I came and met with Susan Austin and Dr. Ghanir and Jay many years ago to talk about a better, more detailed budget book back when it wasn't cool and I couldn't get the support. I think it also has been said here tonight that, you know, oh, bad budgeting, bad financing. To be fair and respectful, in my opinion, speaking for myself, this financial director that's before you is the new guy that's here that's picking up the pieces of what he was handed, what he was given. So with no disrespect to him, the man is just trying to... He's been digging through, finding that the person who left, I guess, left it all like this. And he showed up, and he's here, and he's walking into audits. So I commend you for your efforts. I just want to say that publicly because I've watched him on the meetings. As far as this council, as this Board of Ed goes, there's Board of Ed members that haven't been present for many meetings or are non-existent. And there's some new members up here too that asked those questions when it wasn't cool and were told they were asking almost too many questions and people didn't want to go any longer than a certain time at night. And at times, they said, "No more questions," and ended it. Mrs. White, Thomas, and Adrian. You guys all came on and asked a ton of questions because they had these same concerns about the numbers. In fact, they asked about the medical thing, but it was already too late. And the Board of Ed, before they got on, had not convened to look at another alternative plan. So I just want to be fair to the folks that are here and representative to the others that are returning. These questions have been asked. And at many nights, a lot of people were seeming... I appeared to be frustrated by Adrian Johnson, frustrated by Ann Thomas, and at one point with Mrs. White when they were asking these questions. So just, that's my perspective that they did try. If in fact we're saying it is bad finances, that person's not here tonight. And the former Board of Ed pushed the budgets forward and it wasn't asked. But what we have an obligation to do tonight is to fund our education. And if these other concerns are the problem, and that's overwhelming, that is a red glare. Let's do a critical audit scrub of everything. I'm for that full transparency. And I'm sure the new Board of Ed members would want a full, open audit scrub. Let's do it. But what we have to do is fund our education. We're running out of time. Other towns beside us have put 9%, 7%, 6%, 8%. I agree with you. I do not want to pay an increase. But I am not going to defund it after there's certain budgets that we did comb through that got 6%, 7%, 8%, and we barely bat an eye. And some we did not decrease. We tonight have to move a number. And if we can only agree on the 7.9, it doesn't sound like any number that I bring above that is even going to move. I would support the number on the floor. But we have to make sure our children are educated. We can worry about the mistakes later. But the people before you and the gentleman that's here, he is new to this. And I share the concerns that there's been missing links in the past. But we have to make sure that our education is funded and funded tonight. We did not cut other line items, police...
Thank you, Councilor Borderline.
And outside resources, we did not cut... We didn't even get three...
Your time has expired.
That's great. We didn't get three turns on the budgets.
Point of order. Time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Borderline, you do not have the floor.
But I just asked that we didn't even get the same opportunity.
All right, we're going to take a break. Thank you.
Let's take that break. I think we need it. Because we need to think about our students.
Calling the town council back to order at 8:23. Ms. Austin, can you, I had a question on the ESAR funds. I have a document that showed that you had, the newspaper said you were cutting 125 positions.
24.7.
I'm sorry?
124.7.
Okay. And I have a document that has the ESAR expenses that were moving into the Board of Ed budget for 2025, and it lists 43.25. So I-
That was originally when the budget was at 10.5, I believe. So that that was the original, before we started trimming, you know, reducing the budget.
So where did the, I know this was asked, but I'm not understanding where the other 81 came from.
So we did move out the 124.7 by the time we got it down to the 7.91. So that's, you know, over, over the time. Because we've kind of done this in stages. When we first rolled out the budget, we didn't have the health.
I had this document when it was the superintendent's budget.
Right.
So there was 43 ARPESR.
And now it's the Board of Ed's budget. So that's how it got down to the 7.9 because we heard from our community that really the desire was to sunset the entire ARPESR. And that's what was done to get it down to that 7.9 from the superintendent's side.
Because the 43.25 equals like 2.2 million. So how much did you, like, was there, did you use more ARPESR for staffing that you cut?
So we had, yeah, we had not reduced all of the ARPESR funds at that time. I think, was it the 9.3 maybe that we were at, at that time? Probably.
Point of information?
Yeah, 9.3%. And now it's down to 7.91 due to the fact that we've reduced all of those positions.
But I don't understand how, you had 125 people in your budget for 2025 that were funded previously by ARPESR that you were putting into the 2025.
I was not putting all of them. We were very strategic. We were putting, some were sunsetting and some were being moved over.
Because I still don't get where the 125 comes from.
Well, it kind of went in stages. So it was over a period of about, there were three different ESRs and the ARPESR was the last one. And it was over a period of several years. So I don't have like the exact number through that whole time period.
So are you taking all the years of ARPESR and saying that's 125?
No, no, just this last year.
So I might be incorrect, but I believe that that 125 includes nearly all of the ARPESR positions plus additional positions that we've cut. And it shouldn't be forgotten that we've, we're not filling six teacher, seven teacher positions.
That's right.
In addition, so part of the reason that I was so upset, or am still so upset about the 7.9 number being a significant cut, we have less FTEs than we did pre-COVID by, I think, four or five. We have 19 less, fewer classroom teachers than we did before COVID. So in 2019. So that 125 included a bunch of building substitutes, I believe, that we're not using. So now we're going to use a lot of day subs. And to my understanding, and Susan could speak to this, but building subs, I believe, have more value as far as knowing the schools, knowing the kids, the teachers feeling comfortable. So there is a loss on that. There is also, I believe there was 10 aides that were cut in that budget that are positions that we had before. So there are, that 125 is more than ARPESR. We have cut more. We are below where we were pre-COVID with this budget.
And still, it's, it's an increased budget due to all of those drivers of the budget, which is the healthcare, you know, inflation, contracts. So with all of that, it's kind of like we're getting less for more money. And that's with looking at class sizes between 20 and 24. So when you talk about reducing this budget more, it could be devastating to this district. We could, you know, our kids still need support and they still need good classroom teachers and the right-sized class. You know, there's a lot of emotional needs in our kids and our families. I know you know that. And, you know, and really, our kids have to have their basic needs met in order to be educated. Schools are the heart and the hub of a community. We help out with feeding our kids. We help out with educating. We help out with healthcare, our own nurses and school-based health. So there are so many resources. I know that I've worked with you, Jill, in trying to get food pantries in our schools. And, you know, we've worked together on that. We see so many needs. I know what you're saying. I know how many families are homeless in my school. And we are the ones who are so closely connected. So we have to be able to do our work. And our work is to nurture these kids, to give them the basic needs that we can, to help support their families, and then to educate them. And they can't be educated if their basic needs aren't met. I feel like, you know, the schools have become, you know, kind of partners with the families and the town. You know, the town has resources too. So, you know, I just, I really am concerned. 43 years as an educator, looking at potentially something that could really devastate our district. And we've worked so hard in these 10 years to bring Groton to where it is. And so much work has been done in this community, not just with the board, not just with me, not just with the staff. It's all of us working together. And I agree, we have a terrific staff. I got to support them because I can't go put 30 kids in their classroom. Kids need more than that. And so I'm passionate about this.
Ms. White, you wanted to speak?
Yes. There's like a couple of things. It's going back to some of the comments that were made prior to the break in regards to Counselor Jones's comments. And then I'm going to go back into the history of the budget and like some of the numbers that we came from. I'm not sure if everyone is aware that the Board of Ed budget process is based on Excel. We have an $80 million budget that is based off of Excel. That's ridiculous. As a new board member walking in, I was mortified. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, the toolsets that we have in place. I can see as the prior finance manager, I don't know, maybe he didn't have good oversight, but I can tell you one thing. I am now sitting on the finance board with Dean Antipas, who's not here, and Beverly, Washington. And we are going to put oversight on that. We, so poor governance in the past, it's past sins. Unfortunately, we can't do anything about that in regards to audit. As soon as we found out about it, you know, we made sure that Dave and his team responded as quickly as possible because coming in from a finance sector, that is totally unacceptable, not meeting audits. not needing audits. That was first mistake, number one. We'll own it, even though I wasn't here at the time when that was due. I inherited it, we all inherited it, and that, as long as I'm going to be on this board, that's not going to happen. And if it is, then people's positions will, should be reviewed, and you guys have the right task for that. So that's in regards to the oversight. There was no reserve process in place, or if there was, it was very loose. Like I said, poor, poor, poor. But Dave and he's working on that right now. Some of the issues that, everyone's looking at this eight percent increase. At one point, we were at ten, maybe even thirteen. There's a lot of us who fought really hard to get it to eight. And even then, it's, you know, trying to make sure that we can still support the kids. It's going to be a, it's a tough year. I mean, like, because we are paying for the past sins of prior boards, prior town councils, and prior RTMs. Everyone in the past was high-fiving themselves or very proud of themselves of like zero percent increase, but at the cost of, we know all of the contracted salaries that people were negotiated for our teachers, whether it's one percent to five percent, whatever that amount may be, that has always been contracted. Not once has this town ever, you know, at least as long as I've lived here, ever known that we've given them zero percent increase. But, so when those salary increases were being made, let's say in the past ten years, it came from somewhere, somebody, let's, I guess, we can look at all of ourselves and say, hey, as taxpayers, as people who volunteer for this town, and we all volunteer because we all care, right? We're not here to like push the next person over. We may all approach it from different perspectives, but at the bottom line, I could say we all care. So those increases came at the cost of something else. The teachers got their raises, the administration got their raises, well-deserved, at the cost of maybe not funding our HVAC systems, at the cost of our fields. Now, unfortunately, it's the time, it may not be the best time, but we are unfortunately, hopefully, it's the body that's going to say, we're going to have to pay for past sins. Please, whether it's the seven point nine percent or whatever number that Councilor Bordelain might propose, or somebody else may propose, do not like cut it. Otherwise, we are putting, sacrificing the education of the kids today who are there, and they will never get whatever grade they're in back, they will never be able to get that education back if we cut. We've already, some of fellow board members are already mad at me because like forcing like the cutting of tutors, you know, that were funded through ARPESR. But that was a commitment that whatever town, whatever board made like three years ago that the superintendent is holding right now, is that we are not moving any ARPESRs forward unless it's covered by grant. Unfortunately, it's a bad time, like, we're going to lose the DoD money. It's just a bad time all around, and it's the perfect storm, but it's the perfect storm in a bad way. So as you're considering the budget, please keep in mind that the kids are the ones that are going to get impacted. We need, we need to fund our school system. Don't think it, don't think of it as funding. We always say funding. I know you're, like, earlier you were saying savings and efficiencies. Don't think of it as funding. Think of it as an investment in the town that we live in, because I almost didn't move back to Groton because maybe like of the school system, people are saying, don't move back, don't move back. But I was a product of the Groton public school system. I believe in it from, you know, twenty, thirty years ago. I believe in it still today. Our scores are not as good. So when your scores are poor, and then you are creating angst in the overall population of the people who are serving those children, we can't do that. We need to create a stable environment and make a commitment, make an investment, and say that no more, I would like that going forward, as long as I live in this community, that we should never have a Board of Ed budget, a town budget that is at zero. It's, it's very offensive, because you know you're purposely cutting in some other area. So that's, that piece of it. In regards to the budget, Dr. Austin's budget was originally a reduction of forty people from that ARPESR, and then we ended up getting up to like a hundred and twenty-five. And that was the substitutes that Adrian mentioned, that was hired, even though it wasn't funded by ARPESR. They were, they hired substitutes so that we can have staff on hand when people were either sick or didn't feel comfortable coming in. However, that environment doesn't exist anymore, or it does maybe to a certain extent, but they're moving back, or we are moving back to a more traditional model, which may not be the most favorable outlook at this time, but from a cost efficiency or savings perspective, you know, we had to look to see where we can make cuts, which is as least, you know, impactful to the students. So whether you have substitute A, or B, or C the next day, and comparing it to having a substitute A all the time, I remember going through the Fitch, you know, going through Fitch, and we always had like a house substitute. We didn't have twenty house substitute, we just had Mrs. Default. And I just remember, so, so those are like some of the cuts where those one twenty-five came from. And I just hope that, yes, we are looking at this budget, but please keep in mind, we did keep a promise that a board made like three, four years ago, that we are removing all of our ARPESR funding. So that's all I had to say for now, and then, you know, if you have any questions, you know, feel free.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we have, I'm just going to share that with the town. We had a, like I said earlier, we had the Board of Ed side, and then we looked at everybody else as a separate function in the Board of Ed on its own. We had, everybody else combined had a two point eight million dollar increase, not including the Board of Ed. This council has reduced that number by two million. We then moved VNA's out of our budget at one point three million, which left the town in a position where we are at, from, as of right now today, we are in a negative of six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in this year's budget compared to last year. And I will speak for myself. I made the cuts, and they were hard as well for the town side. And I made, I made the cuts across all different areas, because I was trying to do the best we could for the Board of Ed. We were trying, I was trying to cut so we can give to you. And then balancing out the residents of our community, who, when they first heard the increase, were absolutely in shock, and the comments that I heard from people across this whole town, where we cannot afford this, because as we all know, the last couple of years have been tough with inflation. So where I stand as a town councillor, because it's a very difficult thing to juggle all of this, I did not want to go over one mil increase, because one mil increase is about, on a hundred thousand dollar home, a hundred dollars. Every hundred thousand, you keep doubling that, you know? So with all of that is said and done, there is a number here, we've asked the town staff to come up with some formulas that some of us were interested in, and with that, I'm going to put a number on the floor. My number, which includes adding the VNA's into your budget, is eighty-six million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That will put the mil rate currently at twenty-three point one four, which is basically one mil over where we are now.
Second to discuss?
Thank you.
Point of information, what percent increase is on the Board of Ed?
So I understand this is very difficult times, but this is, this in my calculations with the amount of students, four thousand four hundred and seventy-two students, that includes in district and out of district, brings the total cost per student to nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is very much in line with the state of Connecticut average that I see on your charts, that was mentioned even this evening. There is, I know that number changes by years, but by student, that is also an increase. And I know a lot of that number is going to be eaten up by your insurance, but also there will still be more tightening of the belt. And I wish I could, in my position, in the way I think about this, I care about the kids, I want to help the schools, I want to do more, but on the other hand, our, our community is struggling. They're struggling to pay their bills. They just truly are. And as you've mentioned tonight, there are homelessness, we have people being evicted or being asked to leave their homes. Things are happening in our community, and I can say I've done a lot of reduction and voted for just about every reduction that we could possibly do that came to the floor. So that is where I stand, and I wish I could do more. Councilor Bordelain, do you have a question?
Point of information was what increase would that be to the Board of Ed? With that number?
Dee, would you have a number, a percentage increase on that?
I believe per the calculations that were on the handout, it's a four point five percent increase.
Backing out VNA, yeah.
For what, with the VNA's?
It's a four point five percent when you back out VNA, if you don't count, if you don't count the increase of VNA.
And with the VNA's, what is the percentage?
Six percent.
Six percent?
Yeah.
Mayor Franco, may I make a clarification?
Go ahead.
The, the state number has been updated to what the state average is per student, and it's, we're still at about the same, we went over this last night. It's about fifteen or seventeen hundred dollars more than our average. So our average did go up to nineteen thousand and four hundred or something like that, but the state average is now twenty-one thousand per student. And I'd also like to say that when we talk about schools, I mean, this is where our community's values are. And if we look back at our town, the percentage increases over the last ten years, I just did this math, the Board of Ed increase over ten years from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-four was eight point five percent, less than one percent per year for ten years. The town side of the budget increased twenty-six point seven percent in that same amount of time. So how we're not cutting education over the last ten years, and this is, if, if that budget of four and a half percent gets passed, it's going to be a tremendous cut, because four percent of the budget is healthcare. Four percent of our increase is healthcare, or something like that, pretty close to four percent. So we're being forced, we're going to be forced to cut staff, a lot of staff. And just to go back to reading, in regards to reading, everyone knows our, our reading isn't, our reading scores aren't where they need to be. We're doing this, we're taking on the science of reading with the anticipation that if we can get children to read better by third grade, they're going to do better throughout their, there's tons of studies that show this, they're going to do better in school throughout their education, we're going to need less services to support them. So funding reading is essential. Yeah, and, and I also wanted to say, I know that there's been talk of a lot of people that are upset about an increase, and I'm upset about an increase. I mean, I live in a house that's been in my family for a hundred and fifty years, and this is going to be a big increase for me too. But when I heard everyone speak last month at that meeting, I didn't hear anybody that felt that we were increasing the board budget by too much, and the people that spoke on the record. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanted to.
Just another quick question. So the, the VNA amount was one point eight million, is that?
One point two.
One point two. And that was moved from the town to the Board of Ed?
Right, the town had been paying for it for a long time.
Right. So, I mean, that's another cost absorption that we're taking on, that.
That'll increase your MBR, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, while the town side, you've successfully reduced the number on the town side, you've done it by passing off the cost to the board. So there's that.
I will say that while they were contractors, the town had paid for them, and once they are going to be hired as employees, the town will not cover that anymore, it has to go into your budget if they're going to be Board of Ed employees.
Right, I'm just saying numerically speaking, like that, that's a function that's happened. So like, we're absorbing that, as well as some property taxes that we're taking on as well. So, I mean, we're, we are doing what we can over here.
Right, but the two million that we reduced, we still reduced two million, and then you can add on the one point three that we took out of our budget, and then you can add up that to three point three million, and a reduction in our budget, which put us at a negative of six hundred thousand dollars. So.
So to be clear, the board budget that you're proposing at four and a half percent, we proposed seven point nine percent, that did not have the VNA of one point two million dollars. So our effective increase is going to be like three and, three and a half percent, little less than three and a half percent? Is, am I understanding that correct? Because we're going to have to include.
It's four point five, it'd be six if you counted the VNA. It's four point five if it backed out.
All right, so that VNA is not included in us, in our, in our number?
Not in that percent, no.
All right.
And I do know historically, if you look at the graph, I understand what had happened. I see that there, beginning in two thousand twenty-two budget, the two thousand twenty-two, you started at two percent, then you went to two point nine. And it was, you know, we voted in favor of these. Prior to that, they were at zero for two years, I recognize that. We were also told that there would be savings, because we condensed schools and we built new schools, and we, and the whole community was told this. So we had zero percent increases, and that was based on us being told that there were savings. You closed schools, you built one school for all the middle schools, you closed them all. I mean.
And we were also encouraged to take from the health savings reserve included, and that's why we're in this situation.
Not back in two thousand twenty, I don't recall that then.
Yeah, it's been several years.
So, but still, the, there, it's not, we're not cutting your budget, we are, I am proposing an increase, it's just not quite as large as you're requesting.
But I do see that one and a half million dollars is going to be something that we have to reduce. And when you look at that, and you've already taken from all your supplies in every area, you're going to be reducing staff, and it's going to affect our children in the classroom. So I'm just saying that. And, you know, I can't imagine more children than twenty to twenty-four that we already have in a classroom with all that we have to accomplish and taking care of all of their basic needs, their social, emotional learning, their reading, their writing, their math. So I'm just saying it's a lot of money for us to go back and try to find.
I understand that, and when I also look at like potentially your supplies have gone up by a million dollars. And when I also look at, like, potentially your supplies have gone up by a million dollars, there, there might be some savings in there. I don't know. It'll be up to your Board of Ed to look at what, all, your full budget and to help discussions. I mean, I've watched your, your budget deliberations. I've seen them. I, I, I listened to those in full after you gave us your budget, and then they were going to deliberate on theirs. So I think that maybe the board can look into their budget, even go a little deeper into it.
Point of information?
Your question?
I guess is, with that percent, with only that percent of increase, what's going to be cut?
We was asked that at the RTM last year when they asked me to go back and find two-point-two million, and I said it's going to be numbers of students per teacher in a classroom, along with a lot of other things. And, you know, we can say administration, we have twenty-eight administrators for a district that has a thousand staff and forty-four-hundred to five-thousand children. And when you do the division and you do the ratio, you're talking safety and security of our buildings and the management and the instructional leadership. So there's not a lot of room to go, to cut. You know, it's, I think we've done our due diligence. This board has done their due diligence and looked at every, they've, there's no stone that hasn't been unturned. So I'm just saying that, you know, it's not just about a number. It's about what our job and our commitment is to our students. Our legacy is their, them. So it's, it's not, it's totally, you know, it, it's going to be very hard to manage. I can't even foresee how we could do it.
And actually, when I was just transitioning into becoming a teacher, I worked in New Britain for a, a full school year. I had a classroom, my average class size was about thirty. And I can tell you, it, it's nothing nice. It's a lot to manage, especially when you have to take in matters of differentiation, individualized education plans, five-oh-fours. And it's going to become kind of a, a, a negative feedback loop here because if you increase the class sizes like that, in order to triage the situations that will develop, we're going to be looking at, you know, do we need more security staff? Do we need more paros? Do we need more tutors to help supplant the, the instructional supports in their classroom? So, you know, making that cut would be disastrous and incredible challenge to anyone that's on the ground in the classrooms. Just speaking as a teacher who's done that work, who's been in a room like that, I advise against it.
I'm going to say something that I have said over at, at the board meetings. I've said it at least twice. Picture this. You know that education is the draw for new families to come into a town. So picture this. A couple has been assigned to Groton. And the, the wife, such as I, says, honey, let's look at Groton and let's build there. They spend less than any other town around them, less than the state average on their children, and there are thirty kids in a class. Let's put our kids in that system.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things. I hear the concerns, but on the same token, we have families who are being evicted, and we, and as you previously stated, there's people who are homeless. People are going to move out of town to find a, a less expensive town. So we're going to lose those type of, lose the families anyways. If we can keep our taxes lower so we can keep moving forward, that would be wonderful because we have no economic development coming in. We have nothing to offset anything. As a single parent who raised her daughter, went to Fitch, graduated from Fitch, all of my brothers and sisters, well, except for three of them, all went to Fitch, too, grew up in the school system. Yes, times have changed. Yes, there's more issues now, or I shouldn't say more issues, there's different types of issues now. And some of this stuff wasn't handled back then, thirty, forty years ago either. So we're doing the best we can for everyone involved because I understand affecting five-thousand kids compared to the residents at the same time, because we have about thirty-nine thousand residents. We have to balance everything out. We're still giving you a moderate increase, but on the same token, we're also moving the VNA out into your account where it should be if you're employing someone. Because I believe the Board of Ed employees have to be separate from the Town of Groton employees. And the question is, the health insurance, what's the percentage of health insurance that you, the employees have to pay? And two, did I get, I didn't get my information about the step increases for the teachers? And then do they max out after a time? And keeping that number, there probably are some supplies, I'm not, I don't know where you guys are going to make the cut, but there's probably other things that could be held off for a couple of years until we can figure it out. Because as I said, stated, we don't know what's going to happen by next year. We're still waiting for the state number. I don't know what we're going to do. And I don't want families moving out either. So it's either we're going to put the burden on them now, and they still move out.
They might move out if there's forty in a classroom or thirty in a classroom.
By the way, I think there was like thirty when I was growing up, so...
Now they can't get thirty in a classroom at Fitch.
Well, that's a building issue.
Mayor Franco?
Mr. Shawman?
I'll pass. I'm sorry. I'm just too emotive.
The only thing I have to say about what I just said is that nobody is going to build in Groton. There will be no increase in taxes, not in taxes, but in revenue. That's the thing you have to think about.
There will be an increase in dollars in what you propose.
I can't, can't hear you.
There will be an increase in dollars in what you propose. The increase in dollars is barely going to cover healthcare and VNA.
No, it, it's going to cover all of the healthcare.
It's going to cover all the healthcare and VNA and...
And VNA, and have some leftover. Not much, but there'll be some leftover.
We have contracts that we have to fulfill.
We have another unfunded mandate that I think you know about. We've been instructed that all of our HVAC systems, buildings older than five years must be inspected by January first. That's about thirty-five thousand dollars apiece to inspect it. I think you know that. So that's, 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 we know that. But suppose they find something that needs to be repaired? Suppose the central office doesn't have the air handling system that meets code? We are, there's no margin for us to follow state regulations with the budget you're giving because we're going to have to cut again. I'm sorry, I'm not a great extemporaneous speaker. I think it's been said, these kids who are going to have an, I don't want to say inferior education, they're going to have less than they need, less than they deserve. They're, I'm an old guy. I don't have any kids in the system, any system anymore, but they're all of our kids. They're your, each one of you, they're our kids. Don't do this. Please don't do this. At least postpone the vote for a day or two. Think about this. Thank you. I'm sorry. Brokenhearted to hear this.
May I have just a question?
Yes. So, I forgot the question. Wait a minute. You said that it's going to affect everybody, so, um, I did lose my question, chain of thought on the question. So you're saying that this money won't help at all? Because it's going to be, I believe you said twenty-four-point-zero-seven? Is that correct? If we did the full balance? I'm just checking some...
Twenty-three, twenty-three-point-seven-four.
But that's not including the VNA to their account?
Uh, that was including.
He just like putting a four-by-four across and over at the U G.
Um, okay, that was a little...
Excuse me?
Excuse me? That's a little... I don't think that was polite. I'm just going to point that out. We are doing the best we can. Again, I'm going to reiterate that. But if I can get those numbers that I asked for, unless I have, going to be emailed that information. Because I did ask that for the steps earlier.
Laurie Lapine came up and did...
She did not give me my steps, or for the teachers.
The steps for the teachers.
And do they cap out?
They do cap out.
By what, announced, so that everybody understands?
Yeah, the, the overall step cost for teachers is two-point-nine percent, and they cap out at step fourteen.
How many years do they have to be at that?
How many years? Fourteen.
Fourteen? Okay.
Thank you.
A quick side note about the, it was mentioned about the evictions. And one of the things that, you know, Superintendent and I have been in a lot of conversation about is the McKinney-Vento Act. And the school district is empowered by federal law to provide coverage, I guess, and transport. So should any families be evicted, which at current count right now, we're looking at twenty-nine families and forty-three children that are just in the...
Just from one neighborhood.
From one neighborhood that's known of now, and we're working on getting the rest of the numbers from the Board of Ed perspective, as far as like what children, what students are being impacted. So the McKinney-Vento Act enables the board and the district to allow students to stay within district for the balance of the school year at least. And if there's other extenuating circumstances, I believe it can go beyond...
Absolutely.
...one single school year. So this is another support that the school district can provide to the community, can help soften the blow.
And also resources. We have homeless grant dollars that we have had families come in, and we're able to give them backpacks, we're able to give them food, coops, everything that they need. So like I said, we are like the heart and the hub, like, just as the town has human services, we're like another human services. And if we can't provide it in the school, and social workers are one of those, you know, groups of people that we've been able to have at every single building level, and they not only work with our children, but they work with our families. This is powerful. So I just can't see losing any of these resources at this time. I just can't see it.
Counselor McRae?
Thank you. As I indicated earlier, I can't support the full budget as it is because it's an over, you know, seven-hundred-dollar increase for the average house of three hundred thousand. So I'm considering this motion, but I'm looking at it a little bit differently in that, I, I get back to what I said before, we have a healthcare issue. So I'm not for cutting the kids, cutting the schoolteachers, doing whatever, but I don't know why we can't really go high gear. This two-point-seven cut, it's giving you three-point-six million. The two-point-seven reduction, why couldn't we use part of that one-point-five from the corridor? I know we talk about reducing the corridor, reducing the corridor, but I don't consider this a budget issue. We have a healthcare issue. So I think we take one-point-five of that, or reduce your budget by the one-point-five for the corridor, and we do a full throttle review of the healthcare and fix that issue over the next six months. And therefore, there's no, if we can negotiate with the unions, if we can make changes to the healthcare, it shouldn't impact the kids, and it shouldn't impact the school system. That's our issue. All this other stuff we're talking about is, is, is not, is, I don't want to say it's erroneous, but we have a healthcare issue. We, we need to solve that. So we have, we're talking about a budget issue, but we need to move forward with the budget. Maybe you do a two-six-month budgets, whatever it may be, but I think we can move forward with this number or close number, focusing on the healthcare, solving the healthcare issue, and not stripping all the services to the Board of Ed. Because that's not, that's, I'm not in favor of that either, but that's what we got to fix. We're spending all this time about all these programs and everything, but we don't fix that issue, we're going to be in the same predicament next year. So I think whatever we got to do for the town, you know, for the Board of Ed, and, and dig down deep into the healthcare and solve that issue in the next six months. You got to negotiate with the unions. What got to do, we got to do, because either people are going to lose their jobs, right? Or we got to fund the healthcare. So it has to be solved. It's, it's no just pushing it down the road anymore.
So I think the last health trend we got was February, was it February, was our last claims? So we still have, you know, they, because they're always lagging. And they've been, you know, where they typically were around seven-hundred, eight-hundred thousand per month, they've been up to one-point-two-five. They've been really high. And it's like a roller coaster ride because it's not consistent. It's happening every other month. I've still got months to go in this year. I'm concerned about this year, should those high claims still continue to come in. And I just feel like it's not responsible to keep going at that. I understand what you're saying. One of the things I would like to say is with the two-point-two million that just came in from impact date, I heard John Burt say that there was, at one point, was it thirty-six million in the account, John? And now there's two-point-two more? And he had actually said, I heard, that he was going to use four million dollars of that to help offset for the, the cost of our taxpayers. So I don't know if there's, and you could, you could only keep twenty percent, and now he's got two-point-two million more. So maybe there's something that can be done. I mean, I can't tell you all how to do your job. I'm just trying to fight for my kids and my teachers and do what I've got to do. I'm just too far into this game, into this career, into this place. I care too much. I just care too much.
Mr. Burt, you had something to say?
A couple of things. One, six months would be really aggressive. I'm not sure we could do it in that time. And when we look at, we're not, I don't think it's going to be a silver bullet. Maybe it'd be a little savings, but from the options, I don't think you could count on having enough money there, even if you change over to save the budget.
But I mean, I've, I've, I mean, the, the state and the, you know, they've funded pension liabilities, and they take out debt, and they fund it over twenty years. You know, there's other options that we should explore. I'm just thinking, this is our issue. It's not a budget issue. It's, you know, we have this, this, it's really a liability, have this huge liability that you just, I think it's unfair just to put it on a taxpayer, especially all at once. So I don't know. Maybe we consider other, you know, other places have bonded a few million dollars to fund their pension over twenty years, and then you, you escape it, you pay it off over a long time, but at least you're not crushing the school budget and hurting the kids. I just think there's other ways that we can address this issue, because that to me is the issue. It's not all the other stuff. It's a healthcare issue. And I don't have an answer. I'm just saying I think there's ways we could work with some consultants to solve that issue and, and, you know, I don't want to say kick the can down the road, but that, that's my concern. So I'm, I don't want to say I'm in support of that number, in hurting the kids. I'm in support of a number to reduce the taxes to the residents, to come to some agreement. If it takes a year, it takes a year and a half, whatever, but push that, you know, deal with that liability over time and not affect today is kind of what I'm, what I'm kind of leaning towards. So thank you.
Can I just say something? May I?
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, Counselor... Oh, microphone, microphone. Oh.
Counselor McRae? I have the same issue at Board of Ed meetings. Counselor McRae, we did, here late in our budget process, there was like relatively a new board, that there are other opportunities that we were going to explore this year into next year. We didn't think, as Town Manager mentioned, that we would be able to do a thorough review to see what's most cost-effective and beneficial for the town. So with that limited timeframe, we just didn't have that opportunity. But that is something that this board was willing to look at. So hopefully, we can see if there is going to be some savings. And I know, this is just me, and it just came out as you were saying that. Unfortunately, I worked in prior lives where they change the guarantees that they had for the retirees, and I don't know if that's something that you guys are open to. But that's other options to look at.
And just to add a couple, if I have a few more seconds, the way I looked at it was the two-point, the two-point-seven total. If you were using the one-five... the one five from the corridor and moving to a new plan, it would leave you at one point two. And I still think there's, there are some areas, you know, that DOD, if that, you know, maybe there's a potential that comes, and if it doesn't come, then maybe you come back to the council and ask for that money. But to fund that now, I don't, you know, maybe, maybe that, maybe that comes to fruition. And then there's smaller amounts, I mean, there's always a hundred thousand here, and there's...
You can finish your sentence.
Well, I'm just saying, there's seventy-five thousand equipment, there's, I don't want to get into the minutia, so. There's other areas where I think the one point two that I referred to could come from, excluding the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordalyn?
You know, I don't even know what to say, really. I hear that it's, it's the insurance cost, but you're realizing when you crunch these numbers, it's gonna directly affect the students. As I look through my budget book, there are areas where other areas we cut some, and other areas that we barely cut anything. I can agree that we did cut a lot, and some are calling it preparing, but if that was the prepare, to only come forward with a four point something in percent increase, we better go back. I recommend this council, if we, if we feel that we have to give our Board of Ed a four point percent increase coming off the heels of COVID, and that's what we want to say as our economic drivers, where one of our council goals that's up here states, we wanna, you know, grow our grand list. If we think that that percent is the percent that's gonna grow our grand list and help our students, then I recommend that we suspend it, you know, and go back to each budget line and find more cost savings. Why are we so willing to cut education at a higher level than almost some of the other object codes that we went to? Points were, numbers that weren't being cut, people barely budged. And then, once some people brought it up, then we went back to those and cut a few little here and there. I just, I don't, I don't understand. And honestly, all the other budget items, we got to speak once tonight, because there was a strong need to cut, we got to speak three, four times. I cannot support this percent on the floor. And I don't know how. I'll speak for myself. I'm a Democrat, and I'm proud to be one, and I don't think it's a partisan or bipartisan issue. It's about democracy, and making sure that we are funding our most vulnerable, which is our students. We talk about poverty, we talk about homelessness, we talk about food insecurity. What does an education do? Prevents and closes those divides. Education is the one place where people can walk in and get fair and equal access, unlike anything else, no matter where they live in this community. When they walk into that classroom, the Mrs. Quashtang, or Mrs. Laura Iris, or any of those teachers, they're all on the same playing field. And that's the only place. And as I sit here today, I worked all day, I haven't even seen my son today, because I'm here, but you know where he was? With the people out there in that audience. He was with the teachers and the staff members. They were with him today. That's where these students spend the majority of their day. I see my kid for three hours in the evening after sports and extracurricular. These staff are the ones that are raising these kids. And yet, we're gonna sit here and say, we're gonna give them the four point, go find the money. Go find the money. But we didn't say that to the police department.
Counselor Bordalyn? Counselor Bordalyn? Counselor Bordalyn? Counselor Bordalyn?
Yes.
Would you please stop yelling, number one?
This is my passion.
And would you stop?
Nope, it's my passion.
Would you also stop doing the motivation of other counselors?
I'm speaking about behalf of myself.
Because you do not, but you are speaking about other counselors and their motivation on why they are doing what they're doing.
You are speaking poorly about defiancing, saying they couldn't budget.
Do not speak...
Well...
About me, or speak for me.
And I am a firm believer in education, because without that, you cannot close these achievement gaps. Without that, you cannot close the food insecurity and the people that are becoming homelessness. Education is the one tool that we have to close those gaps.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk?
I'm absolutely torn tonight. I would love to vote for seven point nine percent. I would love to. I would love to give you everything that you want. Unfortunately, we can't afford that. And I've been saying that from the beginning. The first night we met with a thirteen point something percent increase, I said, "The town can't afford that." I've heard from so many constituents that said, "Please, you have cut in so many different areas, we can't do the education budget. We can't do seven point nine percent." I get what Counselor McBride says. This is an insurance issue. But it's an insurance issue that came about for the past two budget cycles that wasn't addressed. And I wish I had known about it. I wish we have a magic, you know, crystal ball that we could have gone back two years and fixed it then, and maybe, you know, brought up the budget a little bit each year. And I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming anybody, it's just where we are today. So I don't want to support this new number, but I don't feel like there's any other option at this point. We have cut so much already. And again, I support our teachers, I don't want huge class sizes. And I'm sorry, it is, it's where we're at today. And I'm hoping that we can fix this, but raising our MBR any more than that isn't doable. Like you said, in a few years, we might not be an alliance district, and it's gonna go up even more. And I was that military family that chose Groton. We were. We came here and we stayed here, and we chose to raise our kids here, because Groton is a great school district. I don't want to cut it. But I also can't face our community tomorrow when I tell them that their taxes are going up two mil. I just can't. Because that's, we were brought up here, and we were voted in these positions, and maybe we won't be voted in again, I don't know. But... But what we have heard from our constituents is that we can't do this. That's for now.
Don't forget that we are also your constituents.
I one hundred percent understand that.
Our taxes are going to go up as well.
I one hundred percent understand that, and appreciate what you do, one hundred percent. Please know that we are not in an easy position right now. And we would love to give it to you, but it just, I don't see a way to do that.
Just a quick point of clarification, I guess. Curious to know, I mean, we had that public hearing, rather extensive, a lot of people showed up, and we heard everyone speaking in favor of the proposed increase, some asking for more. Heard nothing. Not one person came out on the record and said, "Cut, cut, cut." The only people I'm hearing "cut" from is this body. So...
That's inappropriate. You do not know the communications that we have.
Well, share them then. Forward them along. I look forward to reading them.
Your level of disrespect. I think that's very disrespectful. I thought that was uncalled for.
Just one last comment, then. Oh, or at least from my side. If we can't afford to give a proper education or a comprehensive education to our kids, we need to strategically look at like what we want for this town. Building more apartments will generate younger families with more kids. That will lead further stress into an already stretched environment. So we just need to understand what we want Groton to look like strategically, what we want Groton to look like, so that we can build the necessary, necessary tools for this town, so that we can support what young families may or may not move in to the town. And that's just my last comment, because if we add more people here, we're gonna be even in a worse situation.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands. So we're gonna take a vote. Counselor Bordalyn?
Before we vote it, if you could just restate the number on the floor that we're voting on, please?
It is amended motion, eighty-six million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars.
And can you state the percent increase for the record? Because that number doesn't sound right to me.
I think you said eighty-six, four twenty-five.
Hold on one second. I'm so sorry. Eighty-six, eighty-six million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Counselor Bordalyn?
And that's which percent increase? Because people are following along, they don't, I mean, you gotta, should state it all on the record.
That is a total of six percent increase.
That's the new amended motion that you proposed, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's a no.
Counselor Pacina?
Aye.
Counselor Rusk?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor McBride?
Aye.
And Counselor Parker?
Aye.
That passes six to one to zero, with Counselor Dragaski recusing himself.
Motion to take a break.
Sure. We'll take a recess, it's nine twenty-two. Sure, we'll take a recess, it's nine twenty-two. Jill. Okay, we're back from recess at nine forty-three, we are on to Board of Ed, FYE two thousand twenty-five capital projects, that's on page... Says Chief fourteen.
Two thirty-three.
Two thirty-three.
But it's actually two thirty-three. Let's see. Counselor Rusk, would you like to put the number on the floor?
Absolutely, for CIP five F, Fitch High School Auditorium, I move the number one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
Second, Boarder, on.
Moved by Rusk, seconded by Boarder, on. Would you like to give us a synopsis of the CIP?
Sure, Clint Kennedy, I'm the Director of Technology for Groton Elementary Schools. The synopsis, many of you, if not all of you, have been in the Fitch Auditorium, it's modeled after a large Broadway stage. It has a bunch of systems, really the four components that we're discussing and hoping to upgrade with these dollars are sound, lighting, projection, and there are quite a few of these seats, especially down front, that get more of the traffic, are broken and stained and the like. Really, what we're trying to attempt with this is modernize this stage so that it's appropriately used, able to be used for a variety of programs, both within the school system, but also groups within Groton who come through and use it on a regular basis. Up until the winter break, that room is used nonstop, same thing kind of late spring, as well as throughout the summer. I don't need to explain the types of shows and so forth, but the equipment is, in many cases, close to twenty years old. Projection, we use a desktop projector on a cart that sits in the pit, we're hoping to modernize that as well, so it can be utilized by more users of the facility, and lighting is failing drastically, we're at about forty percent capacity of what we could be, how it was designed. We're also, by hook or by crook, finding replacement bulbs for very old fixtures that take up a tremendous amount of power, create a lot of heat, so we're trying to remedy that as well. Really, the long story short for this is we are trying to modernize this facility because it has not gotten the attention it has needed over the last fifteen to twenty years. I'm happy to provide specifics on any of those four categories, should you wish.
Counselor Boarder, on.
I, again, you know, I don't mean to bring up my own personal experience, but that's one of the reasons I got involved, is because my personal experience is how it's exposed me to seeing a lot of the deficiencies and things, and, you know, graduating in ninety-eight, some of that stuff, when I go up on that stage, is the same stuff that was there when I was there. My children have both partaked in the music and arts part, and it is sometimes embarrassing and distracting to the people playing, the lights will start randomly flickering, the mics drop out at times, and these kids work so hard to learn music pieces, let it be from theater to performance, and they deserve the best quality to project their talent, and I think it's a vital asset because it is the one stage in our town that can be used, we use it for graduation, and it just would make sense to get this updated and up to code and provide the proper amenities, because again, looking at our town, that gymnasium, that auditorium is the original auditorium, you know, even with the addition to the school, you know, that hasn't really been extremely modified, and we have to keep the technology with the times in there, so it would be an asset to all that use it in our entire community, and we, one of the things we got identified in the Alliance District is making sure we had more exposure to the arts, and it is so important that these kids, when we look at surrounding municipalities and you ask, why do you want to come to Groton, I too was a military family, but also a local, so I had the double-edged sword going on, and when we go to other schools for performances with the jazz band and stuff, and the stuff that they have, and the quality far passes us, and we do have the money here in Groton, and it's time that we spend it for the sake of investing in our children and our infrastructure, so. I just had one question, what other things, you know, outside of this, are you looking, you know, to get any grants to enhance the other things that maybe you didn't capture in this?
So, we are looking at other grants, a component of this is the PEGPISHA grant, that's provided every year through, in a nutshell, basically, the additional fees that you pay on your cable bill, telephone bills and so forth. We just recently got word that because of a shortfall in that budget of the state, all municipalities are going to be cut to a flat twenty grand for that. So that, we were betting on that as being part to support much of the videographer and the AV work that we do. This just came down earlier this week, so we will have to adjust as needed based on that, so we have looked at other things like this, that was a hope, that has been cut.
Well, just to mention Neighborhood Assistance Act, it's eligible for that, too, so.
I'm sorry?
The Neighborhood Assistance Act, it's also eligible for that, that's upcoming.
Well, I think this would be, it's a great opportunity to upgrade, and during COVID and stuff, we were streaming, you know, streaming some of the concerts and some of that they're continuing to do, which is great, because you have family out of state, they can zoom in and watch, you know, your son or daughter's performances, but even when you watch on Channel nineteen, the quality that's being projected on is, you know, it doesn't enhance what really happened, so I do think this is long overdue and needed, thank you.
Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been, I performed on that stage not too long ago, I know it, I'll just say for lack of a better term, it's a dump. However, I do know our budget book, I know where we're at. Oh, false, I just want to disclose, I'll use my time, it doesn't matter, I will disclose, I can vote on educational CIPs because my familial financial interest does not affect that, so that's just for the record at home, but anyway, back to the auditorium. We recently created the Performing Arts Commission here in town, which, with approval of the council, I am the chair of. I think this would be a great task for them to pick up, Mr. Kennedy, I'm looking at you, I know you're a resident, and I'm gonna, I am short a quorum right now, and I would love for you to apply, so I'm gonna make a motion for zero dollars and refer it to the Performing Arts Commission to look at this and try and find other cost-effective ways to do it.
I'll second that.
Point of information?
Your question?
So if we don't have a quorum, this could not get on to a table So if we don't have a quorum, this could not get on to a table anywhere to get approved for maybe a couple of years possibly, would you say? Yeah. So this could be delayed several years? Three, four? I mean, you got to get up and running.
Yeah, the floor. You can answer that if you'd like.
I'm not going to.
I think once there's a quorum that they can do that. And he zeroed out the number, and also there has been, Mr. Burt has given access and/or knowledge of an access to a grant that could be helpful. So they do not have to wait for us if they'd like to apply for other grants as well. And, Councilor McBride?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. I've been to a lot of events there, but it was outside Fitch, they were outside agencies. Do you happen to know what type of revenue stream you generate from having outside activities at that location?
Mr. Burt might know because it does go into the general fund. If, you know, we do have a policy that we charge for using the auditorium, and, you know, they have to provide insurance and all of that, but the funds go directly to the town council, not to the board.
Okay, I'm just wondering if sometimes the cost could be picked up through the revenue stream.
The facilities use?
Okay.
Those funds that we charge for outside people?
Like rentals?
Especially for the auditorium? They go to the town?
Let me take a look.
Okay.
I just ask because if it's...
They don't come to the school board?
You know, if it's 20 grand, it may pay for itself over a couple of years if you're generating that kind of revenue. That was my main question. Thank you.
I have just a quick question. So if it is a school event, that is something that, and you charge?
We don't charge for our own school events. This is for outside groups, like there's a dance theater company that comes in every spring, and they rent the facilities and they pay. And they pay for things like custodial charges and light, but they also have, there's a rental fee for the facility.
So if the school has an event, like a play, and you charge admission?
If the school has an event and there are students, I don't even know if we charge, but if there is a charge, it would probably go to the booster club for the theater. So...
Do you know what revenue, what budget line that would be included in?
Every event I've gone to as a parent, there's been like donations available and like a booster club bake sale table out front, but there's been no charge to go in there.
In this policy, it's really for outside groups that come in, you know, not for charges for our own students and their organizations.
Thank you.
So just to kind of put this in perspective, just as an individual board member, when we first started looking at the budget, we had six CIPs identified as potential. One was Fitch High School Athletic and Facilities for, if I'm reading this correctly, 320,000? Is that? I don't know, maybe... And then there is Northeast and Kalnowski HVAC upgrades for 550,000, and that was over the period of the next one, two, three, four, five years? Is that correct? And then Fitch High School HVAC upgrade for 5 million and 54... Yeah, 5 million 54,000?
That's correct.
Yeah, and then...
That was beyond what the CIP would do. But we just wanted to put it out there that that's going to need to be done.
It needs to be done, right. So these are placeholders. These are markers, right? These are things that are going to have to be done whether it's this year, next year, a year from now, or four years ago. And then there's Charles Barnum HVAC upgrade for $2,318,000. There's Fitch High School Culinary Arts for $600,000. And then the Fitch High School Auditorium project, $141,000. This is the lowest, smallest CIP. And it was not our body, if my understanding is correctly, it was not the Board of Ed's choice to move this smallest one forward. It was the town manager who selected this out of these six to put forward as a CIP for the town council to consider. In my opinion, all this stuff needs to be done. The Northeast Academy HVAC upgrades actually is costing the district money and power because in order to compensate for the issues there, we have to run air conditioning and heating at the same time to keep moisture levels to a tolerable level, if that's correct. Right? Am I understanding this correct?
Heating, heating oil and electricity, yes.
Yes, so heating, yeah, so. And one of the reasons why we weren't able to get a grant in the previous year, previous fiscal cycle, was because the town council had not committed on their end to help fund the CIP. So we did not qualify for a grant. So at some point, there...
That's a little off, though, just to say that. That's not the complete, you have to have a study done before you can even apply.
Either way, there needs to be a commitment to making these projects happen, and they're not been happening. These commitments have not come. We've, I mean, prior to my time here, it's been asked before, from my understanding.
There was one grant that we had applied for.
Can't hear you.
We had one grant that we did apply for, but we did not receive.
And part of that was because you found out that, that you have to have a study first.
I don't know about the study.
There's a study required to complete application.
And I also think that it has, so if we're able to do it in December, I really want to go after the next one, HVAC, but I'd have to come to the council to make sure that, you know, we could fund it properly. So as soon as I get that information, I'll find out. And I will look, John, to see about the study.
That's at least what Jay told me, yeah.
Okay, well, I don't know about that.
So, you know, my overall point is that, you know, at some point, we need to make a commitment, and we need to, you know, as a town, you know, invest in the school facilities. And there are upgrades that need to be done, and this is the smallest one out of the six that were identified in this last budget cycle. So I would encourage you all to be, to support the 141 number, and, you know, let's get this study on. It's long overdue.
Councilor Rusk?
Thank you. Just some clarification. The PEGPISHA cut to $20,000, is that townwide or is that for the school district?
That is a, that is for the school district. I am not speaking of Sean Greeley and what he's been doing.
Okay.
At least that's the information. We do not have a formal letter yet. That was the information that was forwarded to prepare people. That has not been officially documented to us yet.
So will that $20,000 be used for this?
For this?
Yes.
It is not earmarked for this. It's not how we wrote the grant. I do not know if PEGPISHA will allow us to, since they've cut everyone, if they'll allow us to change what is on that. So I, could it be? Yes. I do not know if that's feasible based on lack of information at this point.
Okay, and Neighborhood Assistance Act, Mr. Burt, how much has the town in different areas received in the Neighborhood Assistance Act?
Well, I know we've been very successful. You know, you match up a business with the requests for the nonprofit, and I think last year, all of them, all the requests got funded.
In what type of number?
I hate to guess. You know, this would be in the realm of what a project would be, though. I might be able to find you if you give me a few minutes.
And do you know when the Neighborhood Assistance Act, the grant application is?
It's coming up pretty soon, and I did pass the information on to the superintendent.
Okay. I would ask that you definitely go after that. If it doesn't happen, then come back next year, and we'll see if we have a better budget next year.
I was able to locate the revenue that you're referring to. It comes over into the other school receipts revenue line, but it's labeled building use, so it didn't look like rental fees to me. Were you looking to see how much that was?
Councilor McBride requested that.
Yes, if you have it.
Okay. So we have not received anything in fiscal '24 to date. Fiscal '23 was about $9,000, and fiscal '22 was about $5,600.
It's usually that spring dance recital thing, I think, that usually comes in.
And it's your maintenance that does the cleanup and all that?
I think it is, yeah.
That's probably something that should be looked at. That seems odd to me that we would get that.
IT support as well.
Something to look at.
Do we have any more comments? Councilor Borderline, you've already spoken.
I just have a point of information.
Your question?
To the town manager, it would seem to me if those monies are correct, could you set that aside to save for these types of projects for the maintenance of that?
In my mind, unless there's a justification I can't think of, I think I should probably stay with them, but something we need to discuss. I'm certainly, offhand, it seems like it.
I will, I guess I'll make a referral to talk about it at the council. So any monies from 2024 that goes back to Board of Ed?
Point of information?
Your question?
Yes. Ms. Simmons, didn't you just say that there was no money received? For this year? Okay. So we cannot, we cannot pull out the monies from before. Twenty-two and twenty-three?
Yeah.
It doesn't exist. Okay. Just want to point that out. Thank you.
If there ever is a non-lapsing fund, that'd be, something maybe that could be part of that, yeah.
Okay, I don't see any more hands. We'll be voting on Board of Ed CIP F5. The number on the floor is zero, which does not prevent you from applying for grants on your own as well, but also there is attached to that a referral to the Arts Commission to work with you if need be, once they are set up and running. Councilor Borderline?
No.
Councilor Pacino?
Aye.
Councilor Rusk? Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor McBride?
Yes.
Councilor Gajewski?
Yes.
Councilor Parker?
Yes.
That passes seven to one to zero. Thank you. It's not been an easy night. I'm so sorry. So up next will be the Capital Debt Services. So I think at this moment, we're going to take a break and let our finance department...
Is that good enough, you and Sam, again?
Work some... We're taking a break, though. We're taking a small break. I apologize.